I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
I'm sure he'll be here.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I move approval.
I'll second it.
Is that motion by Jacobson?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Roberts.
Seconded by Roberts. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Mr. Brown?
Just a point of information. I don't think we ever approved the minutes from November 3rd. So if the clerk could look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. All right. For the minutes of the 21st, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Well, it's not really required at this point. It's on the agenda. Do you want to do it? We have a lot of people here, so. Okay. We'll move on to petitions and communications. We normally give people five minutes, but we have a huge number of people. And when we have a very large group, we will limit it to three minutes. So we don't want people to repeat what other people have just said. So if you feel that your statement has already been made, you can pass. I'd like to start with Professor Francis Boyle. He wrote our original resolution that was passed in 1986. And Urbana has a human rights ordinance that dates back to 1975, which we would not discriminate against people based on their national origin. So Professor Boyle, would you like to come up? And do you think you could limit it to five minutes to launch this? Is that possible?
Not, no committing.
Thank you very much for inviting me to speak here today, Mayor Pressing and distinguished members of the council. Yes, I was last here 30 years ago in the spring of 1986, when we had a crisis on our hand, which was thousands, tens of thousands of refugees from Central America fleeing the conflicts in Nicaragua, El Salvador, Guatemala. And the Urbana City Council courageously adopted a resolution of sanctuary for all of these refugees. And I did spend a night here presenting a formal paper and testimony, and then answering every question that you had, and then some follow-up with the city attorney on that matter. And I believe, Mayor Pressing, you put that testimony on the webpage or something like that. It was also testimony I gave in Oak Park. I gave it in Evanston, and also I was out in San Francisco for their sanctuary resolution. Today, we face a crisis, as you know. President-elect Trump has said he is going to summarily deport 2 to 3 million undocumented migrants here in the United States. We law professors would call them economic migrants. There's a population of maybe 11 million. I guess he's going to work his way through. And so we in the community are back here to the Urbana City Council to ask you to consider adopting a new updated ordinance to deal with the current crisis situation. Last week, as you know, Fred Sow, attorney with the Immigrants Rights Organization, was down here. I met with him in my office. We agreed on the parameters of this draft ordinance. I believe you should have it in your packet of materials tonight. It is, I believe, fully consistent with the requirements of United States federal law and the state of Illinois law. Indeed, back in January of 1987, I had a debate with the INS District Director for the entire Midwest region over the original sanctuary resolution. And in this debate, the INS District Director, the predecessor of ICE, publicly admitted that there is no obligation, none, for state and local governments such as the city of Urbana to assist the United States federal government in the enforcement of federal immigration law. None. And the ordinance you have before you that we drafted, and I only have five minutes here to speak, so I'm not going to go through it all, but I'm happy to answer questions with you, we believe draws that line quite clearly what Urbana does not have to do with respect to any type of cooperation with federal immigration authorities. The one exception we do have in there, and as a law professor, it certainly is correct, that Urbana would have to cooperate and obey an order or a warrant from a United States federal district court or a court organized under the state of Illinois. But other than that, there is no obligation to do anything, and we would encourage the city of Urbana to adopt our ordinance. Second is another provision in there, that Urbana City Services would be provided to all residents here in Urbana on proof of residency, real estate tax bill, utility bill, and no inquiry at all into immigration status. Those are two of the key provisions in there. And of course, Urbana law enforcement authorities would not cooperate with ICE unless someone showed up, again, with a warrant or an order from the United States federal district judge or a state of Illinois court. These days, ICE, which is the successor to the INS, is part of the Department of Homeland Security. It is not even part anymore of the Department of Justice. And in our opinion, they're not really administering much justice over there in ICE these days. But we'll have to see. It does not look very good with Mr. Trump, whoever he's going to be putting in there. The last point I want to make here, and if you like, I'm happy to answer your questions on our draft ordinance, is this threat made by Mr. Trump to cut off federal assistance to state and local governments that are part of the sanctuary movement? Well, first, we are already part of the sanctuary movement, going back to 1986. So I think the Urbana City Council should be proud of that. But second, this is a hollow threat. President Reagan made this exact same threat back in the 1980s. And at that time, in preparation for the hearings before the Urbana City Council, I asked my two former students, the McGraths, to prepare an opinion letter for the Urbana City Council indicating that the president simply did not have the authority unilaterally to cut off federal funds to state and local governments. I believe you have that opinion letter. I circulated now 30 years ago. The law is still the same. And by the way, this was a hollow threat by President Reagan. He never cut off any funds to anyone. He was just trying to bully state and local governments to go along on his illegal enforcement of, I would say, malenforcement of federal immigration laws. And indeed, eventually, the United States Supreme Court in March of 1987 in Cardozo Von Seka struck down the Reagan asylum regulations as violating the U.S. Refugee Act and the U.N. Refugee Protocol, which is exactly the position I had taken here before Urbana. I believe, again, that Mr. Trump is trying to bully state and local governments such as Urbana. I think it's a hollow threat. Even if he does go forward with his threat, this will require congressional authorization for the reasons stated in the opinion letter by the McGraths. And even if Congress were to pass such legislation, certainly it would be subject to a very serious constitutional attack in the United States Supreme Court since 1987, under the Rehnquist Court and the Roberts Court, with the development of the states' right doctrine. Basically, in the Obamacare case, that the federal government cannot hold a gun to the head of state and local governments and force them to comply. And also, in the Brady case, that the federal government cannot dragoon state and local governments to perform federally required activities such as the enforcement of the immigration laws. So in my opinion, we're already a sanctuary city here in Urbana. And we just think, the members of the community that I'm speaking for, that this ordinance should be updated to deal with the current emergency situation. And we respectfully submit that Urbana should not be bullied and intimidated by Mr. Trump, but should stand up and be counted on behalf of these completely innocent human beings, as you did and have done since 1986. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Professor Boyle. We don't have an ordinance in front of us now. We're just, this is just starting the discussion.
That's correct.
But we will certainly get the ordinance out to people. But we're here to listen to what people have to say, and just starting the process.
That's correct.
We normally run it through a committee first.
I did submit to you a draft ordinance.
Yes, right. We'll get that out to people, but it's not an action item, because this is a full council meeting, and we normally start things in committee. We give things a lot of consideration. But are there questions? Yes, Diane, and then Dennis.
Yes, we received a copy of the 1986 resolution, and it was passed by city council, but it was not signed by the mayor at the time. What is the legal status of that?
My understanding is that it is an official document. It is in the records, and it is listed as an official resolution of the city of Urbana. But the city attorney, I guess, could give you a better opinion. I take it Mayor Markland didn't want to sign it, but I don't believe that prohibited from going into effect.
Literally in the blank, it said, he, someone wrote in, "Not signed."
Right. It's listed in the official record.
Yeah, it's in effect, because there wasn't a majority on the council that, he didn't veto it. So if he didn't sign it, it just goes into effect.
I just wondered about that. So we don't have, you sent a draft ordinance?
That is correct.
Recently?
Yes. We, I got it, as I said, I had a meeting with Mr. Sow, and we discussed the parameters of this draft ordinance. He went back to his office, and on an expedited basis, they drafted it consistent with our understanding. They got it to me Friday. I believe it should be in your packet of materials.
We get things out on Thursday, so we will get it to people.
It's the email we got from Alex.
Yeah, we got, actually, it came in the email today.
I have copies of it here, too, if you need.
Right. But we're not going to act on the ordinance today, so.
No, of course not.
Everybody will have it in due time.
Well, we don't know that we're not going to act on it.
We can't, because...
Well, we do. Well, we're not going to take final action on it.
Right.
We could initiate action.
Sure. Okay, Dennis?
And if it was delivered to us by email this afternoon, I haven't seen it yet myself, because I've been doing other things today, and I didn't check again my emails. So I'd certainly like to see the copy of it before we take action.
Of course. And I'm happy to return here to answer any questions you have, and also, if necessary, work with the city attorney like I did the last time on the 1986 resolution. Sure.
Eric?
So I assume and hope that if things really go south, and we get warrants or court orders that in conscience, one or more of our employees decides they can't obey, that you'll be available to help defend.
Of course, sure. As a matter of fact, I served as counsel to the national sanctuary movement back in the 1980s, set up by my friends, Father Tom Royer and Reverend Jim Holloman. And we worked on cases all over the country. So yes, if that is correct, I'm certainly prepared, and I worked on those cases free of charge. Sure. Yes.
Well, we certainly appreciate you coming tonight. And the history of your involvement in this whole issue, it's very much about Urbana values.
I think it's...
Even though you live in Champaign, we're so happy you came here.
That was my wife's decision, Mayor Pressing. She picked our home out. I had nothing, I just paid for it, so.
You decide the big issues, and she decides where you live.
Pardon me?
You decide the big issues, and she decides where you live.
She decided the big issue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Tim King?
Thank you. William Brown invited my colleague Alex to speak tonight. I just wanted to introduce our organization, Three Spinners, a local nonprofit dedicated to rebuilding the lives of resettled refugee families. And I wanted to come here to reaffirm our commitment to displaced populations after the election results, to stand with ESRMAC, Immigration Forum, and other groups, and just express our group's concern with maintaining Urbana as a safe community for those seeking safety for their families and for themselves. Our tradition of open doors is one that has brought diversity and productivity to our community, and we see no reason why that should change. We would like to participate in any ongoing efforts that seek to establish and maintain a safe and welcoming city here for refugees, asylum seekers, immigrants, any displaced populations, and do anything we can to help.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I know you're a pretty young organization still, and you've been reaching out to a lot of families and people that might be able to house immigrants, especially from Syria, refugees. I wondered if you had any specific number goals in mind for Champaign County or the area, and how, what kind of response you've had?
There's been, through the Fair Group and ESRMAC, we've gotten one family, we've helped one family. We don't have number goals at the moment, because it's hard to know what the resettlement centers are going to be able to provide, especially with the government transition. We do have several landlords that have expressed interest in either low-cost or free housing, have had lots of clothing donations, so, and employment opportunities. So we have some resources behind us. We just need to get people here at this point.
Just one more question for somebody that hasn't really worked in that area before. Do you work mostly with the State Department? Do you have any involvement with the state of Illinois? What's your main contact?
So we're farther down the line. Once the whole vetting process is be done, has been accomplished, there's a national group that determines where they'll be resettled. And right now, we've been working with ones in Chicago and Indianapolis, and just trying to support their current mission. And then we're working with several groups here to open a center in town so that we can directly house peoples in Urbana and Champaign instead of Chicago and Indianapolis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Putman?
And I will make it real short. Thank you so much. The last time I spoke to a group, it was, I had...
Do you want to speak into the mic? Just move it over to you.
...attending the community meeting hosted by the Immigration Forum. And it's a good thing I brought the walker, because the fire marshal needed to do a count at the Robeson Pavilion of the Champaign Library, because so many people wanted to get on board. And good thing I sat on my walker, because there were no chairs. I left that meeting confident that in Urbana and Champaign, we have decoupled law enforcement from, we have decoupled local police from immigration enforcement, and that we have decoupled public education from immigration enforcement. That was good to know. I want to see it continue. Council Fred Sow urged us to perhaps avoid use of the word sanctuary and speak instead of safety and welcoming community. I have so less to add to this discussion than other eminent people in the room, but I want to profoundly, profoundly thank you, Mayor Pressing and council, for hosting what will be the huge discussion, and it needs to be huge. Thank you very much. I'm pleased to live in a safe and welcoming, immigrant welcome, immigrant safe community. I don't care whether we call it sanctuary or not. I don't want to wave a red flag in front of a bowl, but I do want us to be safe and welcoming. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Okay. Jacqueline Hannah is in support of Sanctuary City, but she does not wish to address the council. And Jacqueline Hannah is opposed to hiring more police, but she does not wish to address the council. Abby Manister also is in support of the sanctuary cities, and she chooses not to address the council. Beldon Fields is not shy and will address the council.
I was actually going to make some references that Francis Boyle also did, because I was part of the sanctuary movement. And it was very, and I want to make a couple of points historically, and I want to relate it to law, because both what the Reagan administration has done, and what I fear our new administration might do, is just take the position that they stand on the firm ground on law. If people are here illegally, even if they've been brought here when they were one or two years old or six months, and they're living here, nonetheless, this is a violation of the law if they didn't apply for citizenship. In the case of the Central American issue and the Reagan administration, it was very clearly a violation, as Francis had said, of the Refugee Act. And it was made obvious it was political, because at the same time, they were accepting refugees from Nicaragua, where they didn't like to send and leave the government, the more, infinitely more repressive killers and torturers in Guatemala and El Salvador. They refused to recognize as being such, and they wouldn't let the refugees in to seek haven from those regimes which the U.S. was funding. There's another thing that, in regard to law and these people, which constantly gnaws at me, because a lot of people feel they're very righteous and say, well, it's against the law. We have to obey the law. If we look at the history of our country, my, some of my mother's ancestors were immigrants who came to Western Illinois and then moved down to Mississippi in Missouri. And how did they get there? How could they get these lands? Through the Indian Removal Act. That was an aggressive thing. There wasn't any law to that. The U.S. just moved the occupants of that, so that people like my mother's ancestor, who were immigrants, could establish legal titles to land. If we look at the Southwest, if we look at Texas, Arizona, New Mexico, Southern California, all those lands were Mexicans that were taken through aggressive action. The person, the Mexican-American who lives in Arizona or Texas, is living in what used to be Mexico, and was, it was a matter of conquest, of domination. So I think that we stand on solid ground in saying, look, laws can be manipulated. The use of the word "law" in the concept of law can be manipulated. What's much more important is the recognition of human rights of people, and protecting people from aggression, from discrimination, and from being persecuted. And Urbana, Illinois, did that. They did that in the 1980s. And with Francis, I hope we will continue in that tradition, because I think we are right. Thank you.
Just as a historic note, Urbana did pass its human rights ordinance in 1975, and then the sanctuary city was 11 years later. Benjamin Stone is not here, but he wishes to register that he is opposed to creating or hiring five more police officers. Lucia Maldonado.
Hi. I'm going to try to be brief. I wanted to say, first of all, I wanted to say thank you for considering an update on the ordinance to make Urbana a sanctuary city. I'll be really proud to say that I live in a city that is welcoming and protective to all its residents. I work for Urbana School District. I'm a Latino parent liaison, many of the, and I work for Latino families. Many of the families that I work for are probably undocumented and had been in a stage of terror since the morning of November 8th after the election. With their permission, I would like to read to you just a couple of their concerns. This is from a young mother of two. I hope President-elect Trump does not fulfill his promises of deportation and removal of the fair action of childhood arrivals. My worst fear is to be forced to take my children back to Mexico. I am afraid of the violence that is experienced day by day in my hometown. I am afraid that once I live in Mexico, my children will be at risk of getting kidnapped. Kids get kidnapped there every day. My six-year-old son cried the day after the election when he woke up and asked me, "Mom, is Hillary our new president?" "No, son," I said. "Mr. Trump won." My son doesn't know that his daddy and I are undocumented. He is too young to know that truth. His biggest fear now is that Mr. Trump will make it illegal to speak Spanish, and if that happens, he will be, he won't be able to communicate with his grandmother, because she only speaks Spanish. This one, the next one is from the parents of a college student who currently has protection from the fair action for childhood arrivals. We didn't know if my son was going to be able to go to school after he graduated from Urbana High School. We don't have much money, but my son really wanted to go to school, so we decided that we were going to find a way. We have worked very hard these last years. Most of our earnings had gone to pay for his education. My son graduates next year. For four years, we had dreamed about that day. We are all so proud of him. But after the election, we stopped talking about his graduation. The work permit he got through the fair action expires 25 days after his graduation. If President-elect Trump takes away DACA, my son is going to lose his job right after he obtains his diploma. The bank where he works had big plans for a promotion after his graduation. Now he's just going to go back to be undocumented as us. The last one is from an accompanying minor attending Urbana High School. He is 15 years old. There are no jobs in Guatemala. I started working there when I was 12. I couldn't go to school because I had to work. I worked picking up beans, corns, and coffee. I worked very hard, but hardly got any money. I wanted to go to school, and that's why I came to U.S. If I can stay here, I'm going to work very hard to have and be something good in life. I want to study more. I really like my school. It is my favorite place, because there are people here who care about me. My teachers ask me how I'm doing and help me when I need help. I eat breakfast and lunch here. I don't think I will have anything to eat if I didn't come to school. In Guatemala, there are some really bad people. They kidnap you, ask for money, and if you don't have money to pay... November 8th marked the day for many people to start living in fear for -- of the unknown. It also marked the day for hundreds of young people who were protected under DACA to look at the possibility to go back in the shadows. Many of them will be graduating from college soon, but won't be eligible to work. Many of them will lose their jobs in our community, translating at hospitals, working in our schools, providing much-needed bilingual assistance to ensure access to services, or even administrating their own businesses. Our whole community will be affected. Most of all, I would like to ask you to please don't forget that this is about people. This is and will be always about people, about grandparents, parents, and children. I thank you in advance for anything that you can do to ease the fear and increase a sense of a welcoming community for all. Thank you.
Carol Enskeep does not wish to speak, but she wants to be recorded as in support of Sanctuary City. Arnofo Alvarez. Is he here? Okay. But he is in support of Sanctuary. Maria Rivera is also in support. Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood do not wish to speak, but they are concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Bernadette Easley does not wish to speak, but she is in support of Sanctuary City. Bob Naaman.
I mark myself on this issue as in support but not wish to speak.
Okay.
I have two minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Spindell, President of the Champaign County American Civil Liberties Union. The ACLU counts over 600 Champaign County households as members, and we want to express our strong support for your efforts to make Urbana a safe and welcoming place for immigrants and refugees. While we don't know what the future will bring, we can be proactive and solidify our values through enacting local policy. Urbana identifies as a welcoming city and has for many years. So enacting local policies from -- will not only protect that identity, which is important to us, it will also prevent our local law enforcement from the burden of being forced to take on national law enforcement responsibilities. Let's keep our local resources for the benefit of our local community. As Americans, it's our constitutional responsibility not to discriminate and to extend rather than to retract civil rights and civil liberties. So the Champaign County American Civil Liberties Union urges the Urbana City Council to pursue the challenge of creating expanded and updated local policies that protect constitutional rights and liberties for all immigrants and refugees, and we stand ready to serve as allies in this endeavor. Thank you very much.
Kate McDowell does not wish to speak, but she is in support of Sanctuary Cities.
Sorry, I did wish to speak. Did I mark the one? Wrong one? I'm sorry.
Okay. Do you want to talk?
Very briefly.
Go ahead.
I just want to say one specific thing that hasn't been raised here. I agree with everything else that's been said. I'm very concerned about our friends and neighbors who either through their religious practices or through their passport identification may be labeled as Muslim in coming weeks and months. I'm concerned about this for two specific reasons. One is just to say I was a young girl in college who had a best friend in college who, well, I had several best friends, but a best friend in college who I had the most in common with in terms of our upbringing, and I was raised by parents from Birmingham, Alabama, in the American South. We had the same dating policies, we had the same curfews, and she was raised by parents who were immigrants from Pakistan in Philadelphia. I think it's really important to remember that Muslims and Christians have more in common than they do that separates them, and that extremists like ISIS can be separated from normal, regular, everyday, you know, peace-loving Muslim people, just like extremists like the KKK can be separated from normal, everyday, loving Christian people. The second reason I bring this up is more close to home. I don't know how seriously to take media outlets created by Breitbart and other places right now. I am just becoming familiar with some of the propaganda that I'm seeing in spaces like this. But if we take that seriously, then I would like it to be noted that we should be very proud that we have a Muslim Student Association that's been here since 1969 that is a target of the Breitbart organization. We need to support these students. We need to take this very seriously now. I will say, having my dear friend Sof that I mentioned, and if you want to look her up, Sofia Mamman Ali Khan is her name. She wrote a wonderful national open letter to non-Muslim allies. It's called Letter to Non-Muslim Allies. You can find it on the internet. If anyone were going to be targeted by Muslim recruiters, it would have been me. I've been on campus 20 years almost, and I have a dear friend who's Muslim. I have never been recruited by anyone from the Muslim Student Association. This is not a recruitment organization. This is an organization of students looking for love and peace and home, and a little slice of home away from home for those who are immigrants. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Laurel.
Charlie.
Just to speak to that, Kate, thank you for bringing that up. For those who are unaware, Southern Poverty Law Center has a number of pieces on hate groups and such, and they have two recent pieces identifying groups like Breitbart and others, and some of the activists, those right-wing extreme activists that you just
Giovanni Vega.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak. I would like to reiterate everything that has been said already. I would also like to add, and I think this sometimes escapes the debate, that unlawful presence in the US, it's treated like a civil matter, and I think probably Professor Doyle can attest to that. It is not a criminal matter. So labeling undocumented immigrants as criminals is -- it's wrong and is not accurate. I also want to express my concern and call attention to the fate of all immigrants, but particularly DACA recipients. These are young men, women, and in some cases, children, who have been granted temporary status by the Obama administration. These are kids that were brought here as children. They grew up in the United States. They attended US schools, and for all effects and purposes are American. And if Mr. Trump goes ahead and fulfills his threat of taking DACA away from them, they will lose their status. They will be subjected to deportation. And I don't know how many of these students are here in Urbana or Champaign, but there are 750,000 of them in the US. So I respectfully urge all of you to take concrete measures to protect these kids and designate Urbana as a safe and welcoming place for them and all immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Castle does not wish to address the council, but is supporting Sanctuary City. Diana Reynolds. Is Diana Reynolds? Okay.
My name is Diana Reynolds. I live at 2810 Meyer Ridge Drive in Urbana. I was here probably three, four weeks ago, and the last thing I said to you was, when you go home tonight, I want you all to think very hard about what are you going to do to make Urbana a safe place to live? Since I spoke, we've had a murder, and I want to thank you, Mayor Pressing, for recognizing and opening up the conversation to hire more police officers. I am here tonight to support that. I think that if Chief of Police Conley does not have the tools, the resources, and the officers, we are just going to spin our wheels and stick our heads in the sand. Even since I've talked to you, my daughter was walking into Planet Fitness and a known Urbana, shall we call her a regular, came up to her and was harassing her, giving her a hard time. She's wanting money. This is at 8:00 in the morning. It shouldn't happen. My daughter told her politely, no, and this absolutely made the lady go crazy. She started screaming and yelling and coming at her, and why are you being like that, et cetera, et cetera? And I think you know the song and dance that, you know, goes along with that type of person. And they're sick. You know, I'm not faulting them. I'm just saying that when you go into a business, you ought to be able to just walk in there. You shouldn't have to get out of your car, look over your shoulder continually as you're walking in, look behind you. Planet Fitness is very aware of the problems. They called the police immediately, and they came out. She doesn't know what happened, if the lady took off, if they talked to her, whatever. Ironically, as I said here, I just saw again on Facebook, take it for what you will, but once again, another study listing the 10 most crime-ridden, unsafe cities in the state of Illinois, Urbana was on that list. This time, you were number eight, so we're getting better. But that's nothing that we should be proud of. If we want to grow this city, if we want to encourage business to open up here, we have to do something about the crime. I am asking you respectfully to think hard and long and give Chief Conley the tools, the manpower that he needs to get a handle on this. This is one of many things that we need to do, but I think it's a good start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
A question from Erin Ammons.
Ms. Reynolds, thank you for coming once again to express your concerns. Do you think that more police officers would address the problems that the regular, as you described her, has as to reason why she's out asking for money?
Yes and no. I think that panhandlers in general in the Sunny Crest Mall are very comfortable there. I think perhaps if we had more police force and we either arrested them, made them scoot along, et cetera, and it became a difficult place to hit people up for money, I think that perhaps it could help. You know, that's a hard question to answer, but I think the presence for most people of a police officer is a deterrent. I know when I'm going down the street and I see a police car come up behind me, what do you all do? You look down at your odometer. And I don't care if it's 35 mile an hour speed limit, and I'm going 36, I'm going to drop to 34, you know? That's naturally a response most people have. I just think that the presence needs to be there so people understand that, you know, they can't get away with this. I was riding my bike home, and I can't remember which time this was, but it's been within the last six weeks from Planet Fitness. I was going down Final Road by Vaudre. And I, you know, putched on through, went on out to my home in Meyer Ridge. And then that night at 6:00, and this is around noon, I see where there was a shooting on Vaudre, and I'm riding along as if I had good sense. You know, I could have got shot in the crossfire, you know? So I just think that we've got to try something. If this doesn't work, we're going to have to try something else. But I think it's a good start.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Danielle Chiniewith.
Danielle Chiniewith, 412 West Illinois Street in Urbana. I'm also a candidate for Cunningham Township Supervisor, and I run a national organization called Magnet that's of over 100 racial justice groups. So few things. The political reality has drastically changed, and so should all of our actions. So for three years, I've worked on national legislation. We've won a series of victories. Every single piece of legislation I've worked on will be obliterated within the next 12 months. So I hope people come out Sunday, December 11th, 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Champaign Library, where we're going to talk about what the local implications are for nationally devastating federal policies. I don't think folks really understand, just based on the conversation today, how the game has changed. With all due respect, Charlie, this is not the time to talk about cutting funds to social services. I think we can talk about why those funds haven't been used, but this is not the time. We have to shift what we think is appropriate business for the city. We have to talk about what it's going to take to basically cover services that for years have been covered by the federal government, housing services, education. We need to be prepared on a local level to shell out some serious cash, and we have to look at what it means to not only be a sanctuary city for immigrants, which I support, but for all residents. We have to take risks to protect all residents from violence and discrimination. We have to stop evading the now-proven facts that racial profiling is happening in our police department. We have to address the roots of violence, which is poverty. Erin asked the question, what -- how would police help this woman? Right? There was no answer. It was just suppress her, just kick her out, just move her along. Right? But all of our residents are brothers and sisters. Everyone in Urbana belongs here, and you cannot police yourself out of poverty. It's a very expensive approach. Now let me put my Republican hat on for the moment. Michael McNaugan, Trump is going to move huge resources to law enforcement. Why would the city even think about spending your own money right now when you know you're going to get funds from Trump six months from now? Okay, take the Republican hat off. So this council has ignored for 10 years the data and statements by black residents that they are racially profiled. But you have several white residents raise concerns about crime, and it is a concern, right? But all of a sudden, you're about to drop half a million dollars on something. We got 250 homeless children in this town. That's up from, that's up, excuse me, 350 up from 250 when I was on council. There's not a single emergency homeless shelter for men in this town, and you're talking about a half a million dollars for police? Do Black Lives Matter to this council? If you spend half a million to suppress poverty instead of solving it, I don't think it matters. Thank you.
She's in support of Sanctuary City. David Sutton.
I am in support of the sanctuary efforts, but... I am in support of the Sanctuary efforts, but I wanted to speak on suggesting how to spend the money you might on extra police, and that is to take some good ideas from the consent decree between the Department of Justice and Ferguson as to forming a, picking the training police from the neighborhoods, which neighborhoods, the ones which are, from which disparity is distilled. That's one idea. The other is that there are, it suggested the formation of a group of probably elders who could help steer the community, police officers. I wouldn't call them that. I'd call them peace officers. The idea of police in neighborhoods is to make the neighborhoods safe, serve and protect. And what we've got now is command and control. And I don't think we're going to have a Department of Justice, which is going to demand that cities in Illinois accept anything like the current consent decrees which have come Pick the five, if you need five, police from the communities that will be affected, not from outside Champagne, Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Giron, is that correct? Does not wish to speak, but she is in support of Sanctuary Cities. Devin Day just wants to say, I guess he's in support of sanctuaries. Megan Flowers.
I'd also like to reiterate support of Sanctuary Cities, but I would like to...
Okay. Do you want to say anything else?
No, just that I support, you know, there is a, like, some...
Okay. Thank you. Teresa Mendez-Bray does not wish to speak, but she is in support of Sanctuary Cities. Terrell Williams is in support. Roberta Hendrick is in support. Emily Faith Cross does not wish to speak, but is in support of Sanctuary Cities. Adam Sanchez would like to submit his support for Sanctuary Cities. Samantha Rinker is, would like to go on record supporting a sanctuary city. Midge O'Brien does not wish to speak, but is in support of a sanctuary city. Carrie James in favor of Sanctuary City, but does not wish to speak. And Geraldo Reyes, is that correct? Did I get your name right? He does not wish to speak, but is in support of Sanctuary Cities. And the other people, I think, want to wait till we get to the topic. Yes. Eric.
There was a question that I might have asked Professor Boyle, but forgot to. Is it okay to close that question now?
Hang on, let me sit down here.
So I have read quickly through the draft ordinance, and I would note for everybody that it states that it would be, the ordinance covers city employees and officials who would not cooperate, who would not inquire or pass information about immigration status except under a court order. Now, my question is, do we, as a city, have the jurisdiction to include public schools and educational institutions within our borders in that ordinance?
I believe the ordinance is drafted, yes, and that way we have a, I did not go through the definitional sections, but I believe the public schools are included in that too, in, subject to the jurisdiction of...
Yeah. I didn't notice that they were there explicitly. Perhaps they're there implicitly, but if they're there implicitly, it could be made explicit, I suppose.
Agency, here, agency means every city department, agency, division, commission, council, committee, board, other body, or persons established by authority of an ordinance, executive order, or city council order.
Okay.
So I take it, city attorney, would that include the public schools or not?
No.
It does not.
No, does not.
They are a separate unit of government in Illinois.
They're a separate unit of government.
You're a separate, so I guess my question is, even though they are a separate unit of government, but they are operating within our borders, would we, would our, could we explicitly include them? Would our jurisdiction properly extend to that or no?
City attorney, what is your opinion on that one?
I think we could make recommendations, but their governing board, which is elected, has the authority over the school districts. We can't compel the school districts in terms of how they choose to operate.
They are already operating. They do not inquire as to immigration status. That was stated at the forum that was held last week. Both school districts, they can't tell you how many children are in the schools that are undocumented. They don't have that information. They're not allowed to ask that information. So I don't know if that's state law or federal law.
But I think...
But we could find out from the school district to answer your question.
Now, people here should know, because it hasn't been mentioned here, that our police at the direction of Chief Connolly are operating in this fashion. Our police do not inquire about, and I think that's...
And that's been the case since at least 1986.
Right.
One of the previous ordinance, I had a follow-up meeting with the city attorney about this, and I had to straighten it out. That's correct.
Yeah, so...
And a directive was issued at that time.
Right. And that has been maintained, you know, I've spoken with Chief Connolly about that, and that has been maintained through the present time, and I, so people should be, should be clear about that.
And it's also worth pointing out that Sheriff Walsh since issued a statement in 2012 that the sheriff's department would not be inquiring as to immigration status either.
Are there any other questions that people might ask me now? I'm happy to return later when we actually have an action item to consider.
Okay. We would value your presence. Okay.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you very much. Okay. Robert Naaman, you're listed here as not wanting to address, but did you want to talk about something? I only have one card for you.
I filled out two. I may have missed your cue properly earlier. I wanted to be recorded in support of Sanctuary, but address a related item, which is the candidacy of Keith Ellison to lead the Democratic Party, which implicates all of us, I believe, because the majority of politically active people in the United States, you know, the reason so many people are here is because Trump got elected, to our unpleasant surprise, the majority of politically active people in the United States who didn't want that to happen had a plan for that not to happen, and that plan failed spectacularly. And I think it's important for all of us who are politically active and didn't want this to happen to talk to each other about why the plan for this not happening failed spectacularly and what we can do in the future to make sure that this never happens again. And many of you may have heard Amy Klobuchar, Senator, Amy Klobuchar, senior senator of Minnesota on NPR a few days ago, and she said, and I agree, that Democrats always need to keep the issues of economic justice front and center. We must defend all of our people, the rights promised in the Declaration of Independence and Bill of Rights for all our people, and never give an inch on that. But the issues of economic justice must be front and center. And that is why Minnesota representative and Congressional Caucus co-chair Keith Ellison is running to lead the Democratic National Committee. Three of the people that I'm looking at now are Democratic precinct committee members. We are going to be deciding in our January meeting, a resolution on Keith Ellison's candidacy, and I hope you will support that. And I want to say one final thing about this, which I wish I didn't have to talk about, but it's confronting us, and we have to address it. There's a smear campaign going on in this community and nationally against Representative Ellison, and it showed its face at the Democratic Committee meeting. People saying Keith Ellison supports Louis Farrakhan, Keith Ellison hates Jews. This is a lie. This is a smear. There isn't 1% of truth to this. Minneapolis has a Jewish community, will tell you this is a lie. He didn't get, you know, 80 progressive members of Congress elected him co-chair. Bernie Sanders is supporting his candidacy. Chuck Schumer is supporting his candidacy. This is a made-up smear, like saying that Bush blew up the World Trade Center or that President Obama was born in Kenya. And I call on all leaders in this community to do all we can to shut down this horrible smear, because as my friend Esther Patton would say, "It's wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong." Thank you.
I have two more people. Okay, go ahead.
I want to say something that I think is extremely important for us as we move forward because of that. I thank you, Bob, for making your statements and raising the particular concern, because I was at the meeting when this issue was brought up. But I want to say to our, our community as a whole, our progressive community in particular, that as we start to understand and respect each other's culture, you may not agree with who we in the black community may see as spokespeople for us or leaders in our particular community. So to use Minister Farrakhan as some sort of litmus test for anybody in the community to use that as some sort of litmus test, it is a blatant disrespect to the black community. And I just want you all to fully and clearly understand that whether it was true that he was affiliated or knows or has some sort of relationship with Minister Farrakhan does not or should not diminish his ability to do his job, just like, as Kate pointed out, there are plenty of folks who are associated with different organizations, and they still are able to carry out a particular job, and you shouldn't lump everybody into one pool and make them unelectable or unlike because they have some sort of association. I'm sure it's a bunch of folks in here that like and befriend people that I might not like, but that don't stop us from being friends. So I just want to make sure that that should be cleared up as we move forward in a progressive community. Thank you.
Luis Cusa is in support of Sanctuary City and does not wish to address the council, as Jesse Bauer also supports it, but does not wish to support the council. So the other people I have, I have three other people that will be talking when the item comes up. So thank you all. We'll move on to unfinished business. I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with. What?
One more.
Oh, there's one more person? Okay. Karen Aram does not wish to speak, but supports Sanctuary City. Thank you. All right. The next item is reports of standing committees, the Committee of the Whole. Who was doing that? That is Dennis Roberts.
This is, these are ordinances and resolution coming from the Committee of the Whole that met last week. And for the first item, item A, we have ordinance number 2016-11-110, an ordinance approving a power purchase agreement with WCP Solar Services LLC. This came from the Committee of the Whole with no recommendation. Therefore, this presented.
Did we have Scott Tess? Scott Tess is here to answer any questions that you have.
I was just going to say the same thing. I did provide some clarifying information by email and print for you tonight, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Bill Brown.
Yeah, thanks for the additional information, Scott. As far as the solar panel installation goes, it looks to me like it'll be kind of a break-even proposition, maybe a little bit positive, assuming that the electoral rates do what we think they're going to do. That's the big if. You can't really predict them for 25 years. So my question is, where it's being installed, I know one of the attractive things, even if we end up losing $5,000 over the 25 years, one of the nice things would be that we have kind of an example with the solar installation, but also potential emergency backup supply. I know it's not configured that way currently, but in the future, it could be tied to batteries. And I was wondering if you also considered any kind of emergency-type use for, and specifically, are there, I know it's a high spot, are there, is there a potential to put in a communication tower, cell tower, or something there that would require emergency backup anyway, and having that there would provide kind of a double use? So I just think in the future, sustainably, we'd look at that and even consider a possible revenue source for sustainability. You've been looking for some revenue for your committee, so I'd be in favor of turning over any kind of revenue you could generate in that way.
I think in terms of backup power, I think you need to get into batteries, which can be expensive. We are evaluating that now. We're getting some help from the National Renewable Energy Lab. The way that you can make solar with battery backup viable, when you compare it to, say, a diesel generator backup, is if you compare it with the time of use pricing and shave some of the expensive kilowatt-hours during the day and charge the battery at night, or charge the battery in the day when there's lower prices, so midday. So we don't know the answer to that. It's very, very narrow margins, but we're working with Enrel to see, you know, whether that's going to be viable in the next couple of years. At this location, as you mentioned, we didn't have battery as part of the bid. Potentially, batteries could be added in the future. Presumably, as time goes on, the prices will decline. In terms of other uses, like, say, a tower, a cell, communications tower of some sort, that could be problematic because of the landfill. I'm not sure what kind of structure you can put there. Obviously, we have a building at that location, but that's mostly not on the landfill. There's not a lot of that space left, but it's not out of the realm of possibility.
Diane.
I want to thank you for helping me understand this. It still doesn't make sense, but I do understand it. So just to make sure, though, when we have solar energy or wind energy, we're actually buying two things, and that's what we're looking at here. We're buying the electrons that are going to be generated by those solar panels, and it'll flow into the Arbor Division shop and power that building. And then the second thing we're buying are the words or the renewable energy credits, which allow us to claim that we're using solar energy. And unless we pay for those recs eventually, we won't be able to say we're using solar power, solar energy, renewable energy. In fact, we don't even know exactly what we can say, so what you told me is we probably can't say anything just to be on the safe side. So that doesn't make sense to me, but I understand it. But what you, so I'm okay with that. And then for the first five years, we don't get the recs anyway, so we can't say anything about it for the first five years. Then after that point, we can make a decision whether we want to relinquish the rest of the recs and save a little money going forward. So as you presented this first option, I can support it now, but I think it's, I think it's crazy, the way they've commoditized the ability to even inform the public that we're using solar energy.
Yeah, you can always be, in terms of how to communicate, when you're, when you have a solar array at your facility, but you're selling some or all of the renewable energy credits, you can always be exceedingly explicit, is what the guidance has been so far from the Federal Trade Commission. So you could say something like, "There's a solar array at the Arbor shop. We're buying the electrons, and we're selling the renewable energy credits." That seems to be okay.
But, you know, to the ordinary person, what does that mean? You know, we need to be, but anyway, I, yeah.
Eric.
No, we can say, I think, that we are reducing our carbon footprint by utilizing... by utilizing energy from a solar source. The renewable energy credits are something else because they're actually pluggable. They're like stock shares. So, so you, when you buy a car, you don't buy stock in the automobile company. So we're in the, I think, an analogous situation. But we can say, hey, I'm really proud, I own a Ford, I'm a Ford guy. So in a similar way, I think we can say, yeah, we're reducing our carbon footprint by utilizing energy from a solar source, but you know, but we don't, we're not going to own the recs.
But we literally can't tell someone we have solar powered.
We can't say that we are lowering our carbon footprint as, as in the city or the community. We can't say that, we cannot count those, those renewable kilowatt hours on our own inventory because we've sold that claim. Just like for municipal electric aggregation, we buy renewable energy credits. We buy that claim from some other generation source. No one else can claim those same credits that we're claiming. Otherwise, you're double counting.
Aaron.
Call a question.
There is, there's no motion, so would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, the motion that we approve this item, ordinance number 2016-11-110.
Second. Okay, motion by Ammons, seconded by Marlin. Is that correct, Diane? Okay, we have a motion. Any other comments on this motion? Mr. Madigan?
So, so is what we're voting on here, is this option one in the amendment?
Correct. Option one.
So option one is where we get to retain a portion of the recs. So our net savings over the 25 years is $4,000, but we get to claim the credit.
Correct.
Where in reality, we are reducing the footprint, whether we can claim the credit or not. And the best case scenario for the taxpayers, the city of Urbana would be to choose option four, correct? Which would be a $29,000 savings over the same period.
Option four would be the highest amount of savings.
Right.
I would add that three and four, where there's a cash purchase. Those are, that's speculative in that we did not bid out a cash purchase. So I'm just basing that $54,000 purchase price based on what I've seen locally.
Okay, so let's revert back to option two. Option two would save $21,000, 21 and almost a half thousand dollars as, as opposed to $4,000 in option one. So the 21 and a half thousand dollars of taxpayers' money that we would save would preclude us from claiming that we reduced the print when we all know we did reduce the print, right?
Well, we didn't pay for it if we sold the recs.
But we reduced the print because we have a physical solar facility, correct?
We would not be able to make that claim.
I would absolutely 100% agree with you, but it would save the taxpayers $21,400.
That's correct.
Okay, so which is, you know, as opposed to the $4,000. So, so I guess my position is I can't support option one. I think, I, I'm fine with supporting option two because it's a solar facility. It's not being subsidized by the government. It's a solar facility that's being built by a private company and we're contracting with them. We save in power costs over time, so it's not a subsidized power source. It is, in fact, reducing our carbon footprint, whether we can claim it or not. And it saves taxpayers' money. So I see no other option than to support option two and I'll be opposed to others.
Bill Brown.
I don't think option two is a real option right now because the net savings is based on speculative price of recs in the future for years five through 25. Is that right, Scott?
No, option, option two is another option viable with the installer. They would, you know, they've projected some, you know, some value to those recs. These option three and four where we would, you know, where we would be responsible for marketing those recs or looking at option one in future years, where we would own the recs and have, and have the ability to sell them, we would have to, you know, consider or project out what we thought, what we think that we might be able to get for those recs on the market.
Okay. So were you, oh, go ahead, Eric and Charlie.
So actually, the distinction between the $4,000 and the $21,000, that if that actually estimates that the value of the recs will be zero. That is, the, we'll save $4,000, but we would also in the future be able to market the recs. Is that not correct?
You could.
Yeah, so, and, and they do, they do have, at this point, and probably will be in the future, have monetary value.
Presumably.
Yeah.
Charlie.
Yeah, the issue is the double counting one. If we don't, you know, there, the solar array puts electrons out on the system and those replace coal, wind, nuclear, whatever. Primarily, they're replacing coal in, in the state of Illinois. So essentially, you know, if we don't claim the credits, then our energy, those electrons go away and we're actually using electrons from some other power source. That power source by default in the state of Illinois in this part of the state is coal. So that's our choice. We're paying for coal or we're paying for solar. So option one is paying for solar. Option two is paying for coal, electricity provided by coal. That's the value that, value judgment that we're making here.
Okay, so the motion was for option number one. Is that correct, Diane?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And one more question.
Dennis, go ahead.
And from your conversations in the past, we would expect that having experienced the erection of a solar panel array at the, at the recycling site, might lead to the city investing in solar panel arrays once we do repair to various building roofs within the community that the city owns. And it could be, it could even be a model for the public school district, the park district, or whatever. So is that, is that a benefit that gets affected at all by our ability to hold our, to retain our recs claim, our solar viability as far as greenhouse emissions?
In terms of the precedent that it would set?
Yes.
I think it's, I think it's fair to say that we could set a precedent in terms of, you know, maintaining the renewable attributes with the actual generation asset and valuing that and making clear statements that won't attract the ire of the Federal Trade Commission. It's also an element of these contracts. These solar power purchase agreements are essentially mimicking in their, in their standards and their, in the contract stipulations, the same type of clarity in terms of the environmental claims, the renewable energy credit claims. So yeah, there's, there's not a lot of public sector power purchase agreements in Illinois yet. This is a new market for that, and so we would be, you know, a leader in there.
Diane.
Just so I understand, in five years, when the recs come up for, for sale, we could choose to sell them at that time, correct?
Correct.
And we could achieve the sort of net savings that we're seeing in option two?
Correct. Yeah, we, so in, in the last 20 years of this agreement that's before you, we would own the recs and could dispose of them as, as we wish.
So the savings come up really five years from now?
If you choose to sell them.
Right, okay.
But again, if you sell them, we can't account for them with our greenhouse gas inventory goals and we can't make claims that we own them or that we're using solar power or anything like that.
Gotcha.
Okay, we have a motion by Ammons, seconded by Marlin.
I'm sorry, I have one final question.
Yes, go ahead.
So the actual power would be used directly by the recycling facility. Is that not correct?
Some of it would. So imagine a sunny Sunday. There's no, there's no one working at the facility. The solar array would be generating electrons, pushing them right through the building into the grid. And someone down the street would be using those actual kilowatts and we'd be net metered for that. And then imagine a cloudy Monday. The facility would be using a lot more electricity than the, than the solar array is generating at that moment. So the facility would be bringing in kilowatts from the grid, from wherever they're produced. And then that would be net metered. So in terms of the actual kilowatts, kind of like a dollar going into the bank, you'll get a dollar back, but it, it won't be the same dollar.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but if there is a, a need at the facility, it'll be fulfilled first and foremost by the solar array, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So whether or not we can take credit on paper is kind of beside the point. If the facility needs the energy and it's being used and generated by the solar array.
I think that's correct. You know, the distinction is, you know, there, someone is, is buying and claiming that renewable energy credit. The atmosphere is gaining the benefit. It's a distinction of whether we get to claim that and account for it in our greenhouse gas goals.
But the atmosphere gains the benefit whether or not the city gets the credit.
That's true.
Thank you.
Charlie.
Yes, but at the cost of someone else using coal to, you know, it's an exchange. Those electrons, you're only putting so many electrons out on the system, whether it's coal or solar. And so, you know, if we don't get, we don't get to claim the electrons produced by solar if we let go of the recs. That's basically it. And so even though they're being produced at our location, we're not adding to the, we're not adding to a decrease in, we're not, we're not encouraging, we're not adding to the city's inventory of decreasing our greenhouse gases. You know, so it's, it's how you count the electrons and that's what's important. If we want electrons that are produced by solar, we can't give away the recs. If we want electrons produced by coal, then we give away the recs.
See, I would just absolutely respectfully disagree. If the solar array exists and is generating power, the power exists, regardless of who gets to take credit. So there is no, there, there is no kind of theoretical world where gee, if we take credit, our solar, our, our carbon footprint is less. It's, does the array exist and does the array produce electricity? What I'm looking at is the fiscal argument, which the piece of paper in front of me says that the taxpayers of Urbana would save more money under option two, given some variables down the road. I would agree with that. But my opinion is I'm not willing to, to leave it to a future council to decide that they'd rather take credit than save taxpayers' money. I think option two makes sense, more sense than option one. And the power is there regardless of who gets credit.
Okay, we have, we don't, you want to say something, Eric?
Yeah, I've been trying frantically in the last couple of minutes to learn about the market for renewable energy credits. And as imperfect as my knowledge is, I'm inclined to, to support Mr. Madigan's position and prefer option two because I think, I think that the market for the renewable energy credits is so totally flaky that I think it's like investing in penny stocks.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, which is for option number one. It's a motion by Ammons, seconded by Marlin. You want to say something, Mr. Ammons?
Yeah, I wanted clarity from Scott on, so we are not going to sell the recs. At the bottom line, at the end of the day, we're not going to sell them, right?
If we choose option one? If we choose option one, beginning year six, the ownership of the recs would be with us and it would be our choice whether we keep them, retire them, hold on to them and make other people who want recs go somewhere else and stimulate demand somewhere else. Or whether we choose to sell them and, and get the, the value out of them from year six through year 20. That would be our choice.
So as staff, why, why are you guys, would, just straight up, why are you guys recommending option one instead of option two?
So we initially looked at the viability of a solar array as a way to meet the city's commitments in the climate action plan. The Urbana Climate Action Plan calls for the city to, or has a goal for the city to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 25% by 2020 and 80% by 2050. And so we looked at a power purchase agreement where we retain the recs as a way where we could avoid spending money, save a small amount of money and also contribute to reducing our greenhouse gas emissions in line with our climate action plan.
So you said avoid spending and saving. What, what are we avoiding spending?
Well, for instance, if, if we were to pursue an energy efficiency strategy as the city did maybe five, six years ago, we would have to, you know, appropriate money from the city general fund to, you know, provide energy efficiency assistance to residents. The city did this years ago with stimulus funds. They didn't use their own money at that time, but they did it with stimulus funds. They essentially partnered with the Ameren Acton Energy Program and provided additional incentives for homeowners to do energy efficiency improvements. That's another thing that the city could do. It's in, it's in our climate action plan to evaluate that type of investment in energy efficiency. That would be an expenditure. This, we're looking at it as we can, you know, break even, save a little bit of money, but also advance our greenhouse gas reduction goals.
So this allows us to say that we are reducing our greenhouse gas emissions by how much? If we go with option one?
Well, it's, the kilowatt hours are 20,000 a year. It's a small percentage, less than 1% of our greenhouse gas inventory. So it's a small amount, but we don't have facilities or roofs available. You know, all of our roofs are not available today to put solar on. We would, as they are replaced, we'd look at the next roof and the next roof and the next roof. And we'd add that up over time.
And at the end of the day, to Charlie's point about whether we're getting our energy from wind and solar as opposed to coal, do you agree with that assessment?
Well, you know, renewable energy credits are a market. The more generators, like we would be on our, our third party partner in, in this power purchase agreement, the more that generators hold on to their own renewable energy credits, the more demand there is for others to, to build solar because there are still going to be, there's still going to be demand out there from others who can't or won't build their own asset but want to buy renewable energy credits, want to have green power. So the more generators hold their own assets, you know, it increases the price for renewable energy, which increases the return for renewable energy. So there is some, some market mechanisms there. I mean, that's the idea behind creating a market separate from the actual electron, is to create a market that drives renewable energy installations.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Diane.
I'm sorry to belabor this, but I'm working myself around to changing my mind. Option two, is that a firm net savings?
Yes, accepting that, that was one of the, in negotiating with this installer, that was one of the fee schedules that they proposed. And we don't have a signed power purchase agreement with them for that. But I presume that they would, you know, still honor that fee schedule. What we could do is go back and, you know, amend the power purchase agreement we have to change the fee schedule and the ownership of the renewable energy credits. I presume that they would be interested in that as well at essentially the same price. But I don't, we can't approve it tonight in terms of an actual contract.
Okay, I had talked myself into option one. I'm not going to support it. I'm just going to straight up save the money. That's it.
Okay, Bill Brown.
Okay, so I know there was a clause in the, in the contract about government actions and there's already been a couple of government actions probably since you got these quotes. One was the election that might put at risk Clean Power Plan and some things there. And then the Ameren settlement just last week that will, will change renewable portfolio standard for the state. So would that, do you think, impact any of the rates that they quoted? And I mean, this is, it's, it's kind of a confusing issue and it's hard to make a decision between these two. But with, with the clause in there that says government actions, if government actions occur, they can adjust the price. So I guess my question is, do you think either of those actions would cause them to adjust, adjust the price? And did you get this option two quote before or after the election?
Before. I don't foresee any, any government, government actions that are going to affect this agreement. The product- this agreement. The production tax credit, which this installer would be taking advantage of, and the asset depreciation were, you know, I, I think those were broadly supported in Congress. They were just renewed. I don't, I don't anticipate any change there. And I presume that this installer, if, if they were selling our REX, would be selling them the first five years into the state procurement. There's not going to be any change there. So the short answer is no, I don't expect any change.
Okay, we have a motion by Ammons, but the second has been withdrawn. Is there someone else who wants to make a second on this? Charlie Smythe wants to second it. Dennis?
Yeah, so I really do support the, the attempt of the city to reduce its greenhouse emissions and the carbon footprint that we have. You know, I think it's worth supporting that, the solar array purchase. We have to remember that the actual decision to benefit from the sale of the REX is going to come five years from now. So it's going to be a different city council sitting there. Maybe conditions will be a lot different. It might be more important for people in the community at that time to try to make a significant endeavor to affect the, what seems to be the rising, you know, carbonization of the, of the world. If there's a lot fewer stimulants by the federal government to make those steps, then the cities have to take them. And I think that by taking, starting to take these now is, you know, the precedent that I think I support.
Eric?
So just to come to a decision, I would like to move an amendment to the motion, and the amendment is to request staff to return to the supplier and, and get a firm commitment for option two.
I'll second that.
Okay, so you want to amend the motion?
Right. So now we can, you know, have discussion and a vote on whether this amendment passes, and if it doesn't, if it does, then, then we vote on it, the motion as amended. If it doesn't pass, then we vote on the option one.
So if, if that doesn't, if you come back to a subsequent council meeting and it, you get the information, you could still vote on option one, correct?
Sure, we could.
We could just defer this essentially until you get more information. Charlie?
Yeah, the correct motion is to send this back to committee for more information because, because we're not.
You're not ready to do anything.
You're not ready to make a decision here. You want more information on option two. You're not, you're not approving an agreement here by substituting, go get information for option two for making an agreement here. The real issue here is, do we want to use market forces to up the demand for renewable energy? And the only way to do that is with option one or with us buying our solar array ourselves. Okay, those are the way, that's the way you encourage and use the market to, to encourage solar. And if, if you don't understand that, if you're not claiming that electron and somebody else is, that you're getting an electron produced by some other power source, then, then I, I have failed to show you that, you know, the water in this glass and the water in this glass are, you know, from two different, two different places. And, you know, this could be produced one way. This is produced a way that I don't support. Okay, this is the water I want to drink. It's filtered, it's whatever. It's from, from a good, it's from a green energy source. This is what I want. This is what I don't want. And so option one is what I want.
Eric?
I need to respond to that. And I, I, I am perfectly happy to, you know, to make the motion or amend my motion to return to committee, but I do not agree with how Mr. Smythe has framed my statement. Of course, I want to help there to be a vigorous market for solar power. What I do not agree with, based on what I have, you know, read and tried to understand, is that our purchase of renewable energy credits in this context is an effective way to do that.
Okay. So does somebody want to defer this? It would take two people to defer it.
That doesn't send it back to committee. That just sends it to council two weeks from now.
Well, send it back to committee.
I'm, I'm hoping we send this back to committee and explore option two.
I think that's what, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor of sending it back to committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, so we'll, we'll send it back to committee and then we'll look at both of these options again. Okay, Dennis, would you like to go on to item B?
We might try it.
I think this will be better.
Which is ordinance number 2016-11-111, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 20, Articles Four and Five. Those are in Roman numerals. And for the committee, I move approval.
A second?
Okay, who seconded that one?
Oh.
Who did?
Charlie Brown.
Oh, Charlie. Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan? Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Great. Next comes ordinance number 2016-11.
Oh, I'm sorry.
-112, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat, and this is the replating of Lot 452 in Bercher Common, Subdivision Number Four, and it comes from planning case number 2292-S-16. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Madigan.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, next comes a resolution, number 2016-11-068R. It's a resolution assigning an Urbana Home Consortium tenant-based rental assistance program agreement with Community Elements TBRA. I can't remember what that means, but, and it's from the fiscal year 2013-14. And so for the committee, I move approval.
Excuse me, I just wanted to point out that we do have Lisa Benson from Champaign County Regional Planning Commission Committee and Sheila Ferguson from Rosecrans Incorporated here in the audience. Just wanted to let you know, if you would like to call them up, they're here to answer any questions such as the questions that were raised at committee last week.
Oh, thanks, Matt.
So who seconded that?
We haven't gotten it far yet.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. So does this go to Community Elements? Is this sort of retroactively fixing something or should it go to Rosecrans?
It's going Rosecrans.
Okay, so it shouldn't say Community Elements TBRA?
That's the name of the original agreement, of being amended to Rosecrans.
Okay, all right, thank you. Charlie?
And, and so, yeah, since Sheila and, and, who else?
Lisa.
Lisa, yeah, duh. Sorry, Lisa. Are Lisa, since Sheila and Lisa are here, could we please ask them directly the, the questions that came up last week? And Matt, do you have the list in front of you?
Well, I had a question. Diane?
My main question is, why was there a balance in this account if it had been from a contract here from fiscal year 13 to 14? Why has, I mean, we know the need is out there, so why wasn't this money spent?
The funding, actually, the timeframe is kind of an unusual timeframe. HUD usually has a pause in it. So we just finished, actually, our use of the 2012 money, and this is for a new contract year, which actually starts December 1. And so HUD often, it's a reflective time period. So maybe Matt can talk about that too, but it's not that it's old money just being used for the first time. We have just received this contract and are moving it forward. It's just, it's a timing issue for HUD more than us.
Okay. And what are the criteria for someone to be able to access this funds?
Our community actually has three TBRA programs, and one of the reasons why Lisa is here. And so we have one, Regional Planning has one, and Courage Connection has one.
Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, we are a direct recipient within the home consortium. So the funds that we receive, we actually put into a tenant-based rent assistance. That's what TBRA is. We, our program is focused on, I'll just go through the eligibility real quick. They must participate in the No Limits was, No Limits program, which is a supportive case management program, creating a self-sufficiency plan, working with case managers so they can move towards self-sufficiency. We, the funds that we have in our, in our, the funding amount that we have supports eight to 10 vouchers annually. We have the ability, because we are a direct recipient, to renew up to five years. Generally, people are in the program in around two, maybe sometimes three years. It's rarity that they're in for five years. We all, all of our vouchers are regularly occupied, so we don't have a lot of turnover in that. I think someone referenced, you know, the lack of the number of vouchers available for rent assistance. We primarily serve families. We do have the ability to serve individuals, but the focus of our population has generally been families. They have to lease in Champaign County, be at risk of becoming homeless because of the cost of current rent and utilities exceeds 50% of their household income, or be homeless by HUD standards. They have to be 18 years old, have an, has income at or below 60% of the area median income, which is a home regulation, and have the ability to pay a minimal rent. We set that at $5 for ours. Different tenant-based rent assistance programs can identify the minimum rent that must be paid for someone in the program.
So our program is very similar, except that we serve usually between eight, six and eight individuals. We're currently serving five singles, so five one-bedroom, and we have one two-bedroom. Our program's a little bit different than Regional Planning's because we also do the same. We have a minimum of $5, but we have a maximum use of a year. And one of the reasons why we do that is because there is such need. So to be able to help somebody, we use intensive case management services to help them move to self-sufficiency. And Rosecrans actually has nine different programs. And so we found that this program helps people get to self-sufficiency quickly, and either they access another, you know, low-income housing permanent solution, or other types of programs that we currently operate.
Eric and then Charlie?
So how, are there a number of people in the community who meet your criteria for eligibility, but you don't have the resources to serve? Is that, is that a substantial population, or can you estimate that population?
So we do have wait lists for certain programs, and it sort of fluctuates. But I will tell you that the wait lists are smaller than they have been in previous years. And I think there's a lot of speculation about why that is. So we don't really have an answer. But right now, what we're doing, the group of housing providers is using, using central intake to make sure that we identify someone and then make sure all of the resources that have availability are accessible to the person, depending on their situation and family configuration and income and that kind of thing, and whether or not they need treatment in addition to housing. It's a big piece.
Charlie?
Which is my question, essentially, your program at Rosecrans is essentially housing plus treatment for other issues that would not be addressed in one of the other programs.
That's most commonly true, but people do move through recovery at different stages. So you're entering a lease for a year, and if they move through treatments and are receiving services from their physician in the community, they can remain in the program for the entire year, even though they may have resolved whatever their treatment barriers were.
Thank you.
Bill Brown?
Yeah, I recently looked at the point-in-time survey on the, was it, I guess that was Continuum of Care website, probably. And they changed how they count homeless, so that a lot of the people that used to be counted homeless were sleeping on couches in, in other people's homes, just kind of temporarily aren't counted as homeless anymore. Is that right?
That changed, that, that isn't.
It's been a few years, maybe.
It's been a few years. Our, I don't believe that those people should have been counted per HUD's definition in history. However, over the years, our continuum has become more wise and followed regulations more precisely, and so that's the change. At different points, we, as a continuum, had counted precariously houses, what they're oftentimes referred to. So I believe in 2011, 2013, I think, that was reflected. But I don't know that it was officially even reported to HUD, but that was put out in a press release.
Okay.
Dennis?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to share a story that came to my attention about a year and a half ago, when I got a call from an individual who I had met once, who was kicked out of his, his home in Decatur, was trying to live in Chicago, called me for assistance. I eventually was able to reroute him to health, to a homeless center in Peoria, where he was able to maintain at least a partially viable lifestyle rather than sleep in his car. He ultimately was able to establish himself in a supportive environment through rental assistance, and he's now working. He has a job. His intent all the time was just to be a, a person who would be accepted by other people and have a job and get along well in life. And he didn't ever come to Urbana to receive assistance here, but the need is out there, and, you know, the result of his story after a year and a half of being in care is that he's like become a self-sustaining individual. And I met him again about two months ago, and he said, "Thank you so much for, you know, offering a little bit of help when I really needed it." And of course, he didn't even come into our city. But these programs have to be supported, and I, I, I don't think we have to talk about it anymore. I totally support it, and let's just vote on it, is what I say.
Okay, we have a motion by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now, we have.
Thank you.
You want a recess?
Yes, a very, very quick recess would be most welcome.
All right, go ahead. We'll have a brief recess. Okay, let's, let's pick up where we left off here. Are there any reports of special committees? Could you please be quiet? We're starting our meeting up again. Thank you. Reports of officers? We're going to have. What? Okay. Libby Tyler, Community Development Director.
I just have a few announcements. There is an age-friendly survey out there. We're hoping to get about 1,000 folks to 50 and better to fill out a survey on just how age-friendly Urbana-Champaign is. And that is available at geo.illinois.edu/agefriendlycu survey, all one word. And this is put on by a committee that is looking at making Champaign-Urbana an age-friendly community under the World Health Organization and AARP. Also, a reminder that we have the 2017 Urbana Arts Grants Programs open. Deadlines for arts grants must be received by February 6, 2017. City Commission volunteers needed. We are still looking for some commission applicants to help us. In particular, our Plane Commission and Community Development Commission and other boards and commissions in the city have openings, so please spread the word. And finally, we've got a report on the Assist Urbana program, which is back available for folks to make referrals. If you contact our Grants Management Program and Community Development, it's an assist homeownership program. Do you want a home of your own, but you can't meet the down payment and closing costs? This program might be able to help you. We've got a very encouraging report from the people that help us administer this program on a number of new assist originations in Urbana. Thank you.
Any questions for Libby? Dennis? Dennis.
And it's not so much a question as a statement, that I, I attended, I think, four different events during First Friday in Ibiza, Urbana, and also the Mistletoe Market. What a great evening event that was. There was a lot of activity in a lot of different places, and I had a long conversation with the owner of the Bohemia Store and how much they appreciated it. Plus, saw some of the best music I've seen in a long time at the library, which is also part of that. So, great, it's a great thing that I hope to see a lot more of in the future.
Aaron.
I just wanted you to repeat, the board or commission, you said that there was an opening. Was it the Arts Commission? What, which one was it?
I think there is one on the Arts. This isn't a complete list. I know there's one on the Plan Commission. We have, after tonight, I think there'll be three openings on the Community Development Commission. And those are the two that I know about in Community Development. There may be others from other departments.
Okay, thank you.
Eric.
So, I'd like to make a request, and I guess the people who would implement this would be the staff people who are staffing each of the boards and commissions. I'd like to make a request that as soon as vacancies occur or are anticipated, that a complete list of those, the complete list of all the vacancies be posted on the city website, so that all, all residents might be made aware of what their, the volunteer opportunities are there.
So, this all goes through the mayor's office, all the...
As far as I know, we're putting it on the website.
I couldn't find it.
Okay, well, I'll check tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, yeah, please, so it's easy to find.
We do try to recruit people, and that's one of the ways we do it. And if we don't get applicants, we put notices in the paper, a press release in the paper. Okay, I would like to say that... Yeah. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that Champagne, Urbana are wonderful cities with great track records in human rights and civil rights. And this coming January the 13th, we will come together, not just the cities of Urbana and Champagne, but the county, Parkland College, the University of Illinois, both school districts, and I think I mentioned Parkland College, to celebrate and honor the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. It is one of my favorite holidays. It is a day to renew ourselves to human rights and civil rights and the dignity of human persons. It is free and open to the public. I would like to welcome everyone to come. It is important that you arrive promptly at 4:00. It is a one-hour event. We start at 4:00, we end at 5:00. And there will be a reception at 5:00 PM. We'll have music, and we'll have food and conversation. It will be at Parkland College and the Student Union, and announcements will begin to circulate towards the end of the week. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Okay, we have two items for discussion. The first one is additional police personnel. And our police chief, Pat Connolly, did a very good report. Would you like to come up to the front and talk about it? Since we talked about having the training and maybe not having people available until next November, I did check to see if we could do like a referral program, so that existing officers or existing people could invite experienced officers to apply, and we could have like a reward for that.
That certainly wasn't addressed in the memo that I provided all of you this evening.
No, but I mean, that's a thing that we could look at, because it takes such a long time to train someone.
Yeah, and to a certain extent, maybe we can talk about recruiting on another evening. But for this evening, I presented to you the two basic questions that were posed during the last meeting. The committee, the whole involved comparisons. So, that information was provided in the latter portion of this report. And then, it was also posed what direction the police department would go with respect to, if in fact, new officers were provided to the department, where would they go? And that was addressed in the first three pages. So, I guess at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that may have been generated from the report.
Bill.
I guess, just in general, the positions that aren't filled, like the 18-months deployment of somebody, and... There were several, because there's 47 filled, patrol officers filled out of 51. And I know we have a couple of over-hire positions that you can use to kind of hire in advance of those. I guess I'm trying to figure out, is that 18-months deployment, is that a paid? Do we pay salary while they're on deployment?
Actually, we pay, it, it's the, the officer's choice. They could either get paid by the city, or they could get paid by the military. So, we have to continue to pay him regardless, even if it's the military. The City of Urbana policy is that they would provide the difference between the two pays, because in most situations, the military pays less.
Okay, so, might there be some savings there that you can use for additional officers?
And those are being considered. As a matter of fact, Sylvia painstakingly, Deputy Chief Morgan painstakingly tracks all of the money that isn't spent each month for that additional hire, that unallocated 57th slot.
And so, with the two over-hires, that, is that what we currently have, the two over-hires?
Well, we're, we're working toward that. On page two, it really defines where we are currently at.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of looking at, trying to figure out, basically, do you think we don't have enough over-hires? That you can anticipate that people are going to be leaving throughout the year, and you don't have enough time to fill those positions? Would it help to have more over-hires, rather than to have more strength?
Well, as, as is explained later in the report, there are a lot of responsibilities that the police department is being burdened with, with respect to, for instance, crime scene processing. We have now, because the Illinois State Police have reduced their personnel by so much, they are not providing crime scene services, so we have to specifically train patrol officers to be able to fulfill that role. Same with crisis intervention team officers. That may take a police officer off the street for two hours while they're preparing the hospital reports and the documentation necessary to address the needs of that crisis intervention team interaction. So, the, the, the police department's numbers with respect, I mean, everything is a balance. I, I've often said, the police department will respond to 911 calls if all of the leadership team has to put on uniforms. And, and our sole function is to answer 911 calls for service. We are looking and trying to find a balance between the needs of the community and the needs of the police department. For six years, I've been told by the mayor that we have to hold the line, and that's precisely what we've done. But each year, I've asked, and each year, I was told, not this year, because we don't have the funding.
Just one other thing, and then I'm sure, sure other people have questions. I know, I've read through the media reports you put out pretty regularly, and I know that it seems like the past few months, there's been almost, I don't know, I'd say average two a day of runaway, youth runaway, either from Cunningham or Kendall Gill House. And I know you have to do a report on those, and I never really hear anything about it, except the one case where some youth did seem to cause, potentially cause a fire or something. But usually, those, you don't hear anything about, so I guess they go back home. I wonder how much resources that takes, and is that something that a non-uniformed officer could handle? To go up and file a report? I mean, are there things like that?
Actually, that's a good question, and we work very closely with Cunningham. Cunningham is, is a, a unique opportunity in our community to deal with some, some young people who really have a lot of needs and a lot of issues that they're trying to deal with. Actually, Cunningham Children's Home has, for the most part, sent their staff here to file that missing person report, because we've worked very closely with them. Pat Eggy and others at Cunningham and our Patrol Division commanders meet routinely, in fact, weekly, to talk about the issues, because you're right, there are a lot of special needs that are required up at Cunningham. They've been very gracious about working with us. It is still time-consuming, and there are special needs. One of our criminal investigators, who handles juvenile investigations, commits a great deal of his time, and now her time, we have a new juvenile officer as well, a female detective, who commit a great deal of their resources to Cunningham and other special needs throughout the community.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Chief Connolly? Charlie.
Yeah, Chief, I appreciate the detail in, in answering the questions that we asked last week. I think you make a really strong case for your position. And looking at page two, the bottom of page two, the changing face of policing. You talk about these, these issues that, that the police department is now dealing with. I recognize some of them are because of the decreased state and federal dollars to mental health. Okay, I, I think, I think you'd agree with that statement, right? That's one of them. What, what else has changed that has moved? You know, if you look at policing 20 years ago versus policing today, you know, what were you doing 20 years ago that, compared to what you're doing today? You know, you're listing five areas here that you didn't do 20 years ago?
Sure.
Is that...
Well, and I think I could list 10 more, but I can tell you, technology is the biggest issue that we deal with. I mean, from cyberrolling, where our school resource officer is literally going from school, event to school, event to school, event, because he is overwhelmed with all of the work. But also, as I indicated in the police report, or in the overview, we have a detective who is responsible for sexual exploitation of kids through, primarily through social media. And literally could, looks like a Christmas tree with the lights that are lit up for the active solicitors that are trying to engage with young people in our community to get them involved in sexual behavior, inappropriate sexual behavior. So, I think technology is the biggest answer to that. I also think that expertise in certain areas, DNA is an example, is something we never even considered collecting 20 years ago. And now, we have to process crime scenes that require an officer literally to be a forensic expert, to be able to deal with all the special needs for processing and preservation of crime scenes, photography work, a lot of different areas. I do also think, as Mr. Brown mentioned, the mental health issues, and you mentioned the mental health issues, the police weren't responsible for those types of activities 20 years ago. And today, as crisis intervention team officers, they're literally spending hours trying to front-load and address those problems, so that we're not going to a recurring call for service, hour after hour and business after business, like we did in the past.
Okay, so let me, the last question then is, so you, you have a target here of five police officers. Aaron has, has raised the issue, you know, what other, you know, are there other ways could we spend this money? Would we do just as well or better, say, with four police officers and a social worker on staff? As an example, if we have five people, is it four officers and a social worker? Would that be an alternative that might be good, or do we need a social worker on top of five officers?
Yeah, I mean, again, we have to balance, as a community, the decisions that we make with respect to how much time we're going to allocate to each one of those resources, a social worker. Joel Sander, his Sanders, has worked with the University of Illinois and actually had interns for the last couple of years. The problem is that is so time-consuming, that we would take master-level interns at this point, because they're at the level in their education where they would be able to provide more services. We're finding that the undergrad folks, although they work very hard, we're almost putting them through an educational process, rather than getting the help, and it ends up being more personnel-intensive. So, a social worker's an incredibly important tool, but I think police officers that wear several hats provides a stronger, my argument would be initially, we need to, as you can see from the police officers and the comparison to the other comps, we are sorely lower than anybody else in the state of Illinois, if you, if you review those comparisons. So, I would take police officers first and social workers second.
Yeah, so, so just for the number, I, I did a quick calculation. If we had 60, we'd be at a ratio of 1.43, which would be still less than Champagne, but not at the bottom anymore.
Correct.
It would still be less than the national average, too. Eric.
So, I want to pick up on the mental health discussion, and I have a, a pipe dream, but maybe it's not a pipe dream, that anybody who comes into contact with law enforcement officers should get a mental health evaluation. And that the further disposition, well, should include if the person is diagnosable as bipolar, schizophrenic, some clearly identifiable need, that whatever happens, if they get taken into custody for some, and detained for some period of time, that they get treated. Now, clearly, Urbana Police, Urbana would not have the jurisdiction to do that all by themselves. That would have to be jointly between, I guess, municipal police departments and the county, which is actually responsible for ultimately detaining people. Do you think that that, and, and of course, it's not going to reduce the crime rate tomorrow, but maybe it can reduce recidivism. So, maybe in the long run, it would really enhance public safety. Is that a, from your perspective, would, depending, of course, on how much it costs, is that a reasonable, is that goal, in the first place, is it a reasonable thing to look, go for? And in the second place, would it be a worthwhile investment in public safety?
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't, Lieutenant Joel Sanders, first of all, would, would yell at me for hours if I didn't caveat this by saying, "The police can't diagnose any mental health disorders."
Absolutely. This would have to be a mental health professional who would augment the police, and who would be there to, you know...
So, crisis intervention team officers now receive a, a great deal of additional training. And I think that's really important. In fact, I alluded to the fact that although we can't have 55 police officers all crisis intervention trained, and there's a number of reasons for that, but primarily because you develop relationships, collaborative relationships with the hospitals and with the mental health facilities, and you end up having the ability to pick up the phone and call Sheila Ferguson, or, you know, Melanie Jackson from CU at Home at 2:00 in the morning and say, "We need your help." Those types of relationships are kind of a perishable skill. So, we want to kind of limit those to the police officers that we feel are capable and willing to do something like that. Each interaction where Joel Sand, now Joel does, we do get every one of our police officers, in fact, throughout Champagne County, we are very fortunate, get a mental health eight-hour overview that provides us with the fundamentals that we need in order to, to deal with that emotional situation. But we would then bring in somebody at the next level, which is a crisis intervention team officer, to deal with that next level. That's where you're kind of talking about, I believe. And those sometimes literally take three hours out on the street. So, I just don't know whether it would be realistic for us to be able to, in the current configuration, for us to be able to, with every mental health-related situation that we get called to, that we're able to carry it to that level. There are also some legal responsibilities, unless they're a danger to themselves or other. Unless we get voluntary compliance, we can't compel people to participate in that type of assessment or evaluation. So, that would be very difficult for us to be able to just direct them. Now, I will sit, you, you all don't have enough time to talk about a community resource center, where that whole vision was designed, so that police, in lieu of going to the jail, would bring folks to a community resource center, where there would be a, an assessment that was, albeit superficial, or not as in-depth. There would be an assessment by a mental health professional that would be able to do all those things. That's another direction.
That is something that's being discussed by cities, it's being discussed at the state and national levels as well. It's something that we have to do, because we're not doing a very good job on mental health in this country now.
Mayor, I agree with you 100%. Three years ago, I advocated that.
Yeah, we're just going to have to work, probably fund it ourselves. I don't know what's going to happen from the federal level, but it's a question of what kind of quality of life do we want here? Diane.
I had a question more about timing of this, rather than the, the actual number here. But for something of this magnitude, I would have expected this to be presented as part of the ongoing, regular budget formulation process for next... of the ongoing, regular budget formulation process for next, for six months from now rather than a mid-year budget amendment of like a half million dollars. And so I'm also kind of concerned about the proposal to fund it in terms of using hotel motel tax, which is about a 30% increase in the hotel motel tax from 7% to 9%. And our revenues have been actually fallen, for motel hotel tax have fallen short the past couple of years compared to the budget. So has, I, I guess I would have expected an increase of this much in terms of permanent staffing and a half million dollar increase in our permanent ongoing, recurring expenses would have been presented as part of the regular budget. The other thing I am also concerned about is relying on savings and health insurance to pay for this. This is, this is, that's fantasy funding. I mean, we may have a savings this year from the Blue Cross Blue Shield contract, but that was a one-year contract. And then, you know, I think health insurance is such a volatile, unpredictable source of funding that we should not be relying on that to fund permanent positions that are proposed here. So, so the timing of this just, just is what I'm questioning. Why don't we consider this as part of the 2017-18 budget process and consider it in the context of the whole budget?
Well, we had our fourth murder and our police department is kind of overwhelmed, so that's why I brought it up. I felt we should do something now. And the health insurance savings are for, half of it will be in this fiscal year and half of it will be in next fiscal year. And those are real savings. And I brought it to the council for a discussion on how do you want to fund this? I think we need to do this, and I think the chief has made the case in terms of the question that was asked of how do we compare to other communities in number of police per capita? We have neighborhoods that are very upset, and I think they want action now. They don't want action starting, you know, with the funding next, next year. So I think we should do something now. And that is a, an annual contribution of about a half a million, but for this year it would be less. So it's just a question of, do you want to respond to these concerns or not? I think we have to because we don't want Urbana to be a dangerous place to live. We want this to be a sanctuary city. It should be a sanctuary for the people who already live here as well. People should not be afraid that they're going to get shot by some random shooting that seems to be taking over. It's happening in the entire country and it's finally gotten to Urbana. And I think we have to deal with it.
May I respond?
I got Bill here, then you can talk. Do you want to talk first?
Yeah, just, I imagine, I, I took the ratio calculations with just kind of maybe general guidance because I know over the past couple of years, we've talked about ratios and other contexts, using census data and how inaccurate they can be. But by leaving out the U of I police that cover parts of both Champaign and Urbana, and I know that, I think Urbana has about 7,000 residents that live in group housing and, and residence halls that probably don't require as much from our police department. Although they don't stay there, they do move around. I think U of I, the, when I've looked at their reports, a lot of them are turned over to local authority, basically. They, they may make the initial stop and then they turn over the case to either Champaign or Urbana. Typically Champaign because a lot of theirs are in campus town. But I wondered how you, you didn't include them at all, I don't think, in the ratio calculation. So how do you consider the U of I police contribution of those 61, 65 officers?
65, right. And they weren't included primarily because the University of Illinois, with, with their student population, quite honestly, has a much lower ratio population than we do. So I tried to include cities that, that we would be able to identify. 65 police officers for the University of Illinois Police, they, they have a different mission, I think. They deal a lot with mass gatherings, with football events and those kinds of things. And they certainly do support us, but as was addressed in the last two paragraphs of this report, we also have a huge influx of University of Illinois students and visitors and issues that come into our city as, as well. So University of Illinois wasn't included, but I can get that information. I mean, specifically, I know it is 65 police officers, and I don't know if they would count 42,000 students or if they would count 7,000 based on their housing.
The 7,000 is just the Urbana part of group housing, so it's kind of the figure I use. But I guess you could add up the Urbana, Champaign and U of I police and divide by the metropolitan area population if you wanted to get a ratio. But so I'm, you know, that, the ratio isn't weighing real heavy. I think some of the other things that we've talked about, additional training and stuff would be more of a concern to me. Also, in the budget part, there wasn't any extra budget for equipment or, or vehicles or anything. If we're adding to minimum staffing, will it involve additional wear and tear on vehicles?
Well, it would. I, I think because, as I, as I try, again, we wouldn't be able, I can give you a, a basic organizational chart, but tomorrow, that may change based on the needs of the police department in the community. And we may have three additional people supporting the detective division because of, of a critical event that took place. So that would be difficult. We did include equipment in that budget that the mayor presented. But as far as vehicles, we were comfortable saying, at this point, we would spread the officers. And because it takes a year for each of them to get through the process, I think we would need to worry about vehicles. In addition to that, we don't have assigned cars. We have a fleet of vehicles that rotate based on the shifts. So we would be able to adjust that to accommodate the additional officers.
Dennis, oh, excuse me, it was Diane and then Dennis. Go ahead.
Well, there were a few things that could be done in response, in addition, or instead of adding or voting on this budget amendment now, if it was considered as part of the overall budget process in a few months, some of the shorter-term responses that could be made would include continuing to work and focus on the two neighborhoods where we've seen the highest crime and most of the shootings in Urbana, which would be in the Aspen Court Lyman neighborhood and along Vaudreux Street. About a month ago, I have been in contact with owners and managers on Vaudreux Street who are very, very anxious to work with the city, with community development and the police department for additional security measures. And they're still waiting to get, to hear back from the city, to set up a meeting to work with them on that. We've also asked for the city to verify that all the condos, which have been converted to rental over the years, have actually been enrolled in the rental registration program, that we've verified occupancy and that they're complying with terms of the rental registration ordinance. And we're not sure if that's been done yet. I think there's a lot of things that can be done in these neighborhoods to respond to the concerns that people have, that have given. So which, and, and for the first time in three and a half years, the Neighborhood Safety Task Force is going to meet again. So that's a good thing. But, but that's the kind of ongoing work that could have been done. But I'm just concerned about a budget amendment of this magnitude in the middle of the year. And I, I still don't, I still am not convinced this funding is going to, to cover it. And why aren't we including this in our regular overall budget?
I think we would, but you know, we're trying to respond to the concerns of the public. Dennis?
Or Diane? Two, two things I need to mention. First, with respect to the map and the, the map that's affixed to this document where you're talking about the two red areas, now, this is just the violent crime involving the shooting events. Tomorrow, you're going to see a map with 170 motor vehicle burglaries, literally saturated throughout the entire city of Urbana. So this only addresses the gun violence. This doesn't address the 22 other thousand cries, calls for service that we're addressing.
But it's the, it's the gun violence that's devastating.
The other issue, well, I disagree. I think every time that we have a burglary to a residence, that certainly impacts that resident. And that requires police officers to go and process that crime scene and photograph that crime scene and collect that physical evidence that takes other police officers away from the 911 calls. So there is a domino effect that involves, you're right, violent crime is a real concern of mine. One murder is too many murders. We've had four, but we also have a lot of other crime that we're dealing with in the community in addition to balancing that with 22 neighborhood watch groups and trying to get the communities more engaged.
Safety's our number one priority. I'm just saying, I'm just not sure why we're doing it in the middle of the year and not part of the budget process.
Dennis?
Well, one of the issues that I guess you made clear the last time you spoke was that the training of an officer, the acquiring an officer and then the training of the officer takes quite a long time. And I, could you refresh me on about since, from the point of view of when the police has hired a candidate and then when they're finally able to be on the street? It sounded like would be about a nine-month or a year-long process.
Right. From the time that we accept applications and that, that, you know, Liz Borman helps us out immensely with recruiting and with testing 320 applicants, going through that whole process, going through two interview panels before it gets to the chief's interview, offering a conditional offer of employment, going through the mental health assessments, through Dr. Campion's office and through the physical agility tests through, that we, we put each applicant through the Police Training Institute, which is going to be a 14-week training period and then a, a minimum of four months and probably longer for a field training program. That's after the Basic Academy where they come and learn the policies and the, the direction the Urbana Police Department chooses to move its police department with respect to community policing. It could be a year before somebody's actually on the street.
So, so there's two things that this kind of brings to my mind then, that, that if we do delay this and we put this into the, the 2017-year budget, 1718 budget, which we won't adopt until June or just before June, then we won't be seeing extra police on the street until June of 2018.
Correct.
And I am concerned that the city does need, and it's, would be a great goal, that we have a, a resource center where community services could be coordinated with the police department and other service organizations. And I always regretted the fact that the city had an empty building at the corner of Washington Street and Fala Road that never got used or sold or that it just basically sat there and became a deteriorated mess, when it could have been perhaps with fourth site converted into some kind of a service center and a community center right there at the heart of our two most needful neighborhoods. So we would be finding, I guess, a purpose for some future building to host that, whether it be supported by grants or whether the city could actually support, or the community at large could support the facilities, the staff, and the maintenance of such a building was kind of beyond our call of understanding at this moment.
Eric?
So in the first place, I share Diane's concern about the, the, the funding stream that would come from health insurance savings. I, I just think there's no guarantee at all that's based on a one-year contract. Now, we could, you know, as I mentioned in the township meeting, we could think about moving social service fund, you know, some social service funding to the township and that would pay for an officer. I think, I'm, I'm fairly well convinced that just by the two factors. One is the, the loss of adequate support from state police collaboration and also simply by population growth, that our population has grown since the last time that the police force was augmented. So we're losing ground. But I also think that in general, in general, it's really a bad idea to commit massive recurring funding rapidly to a short-term crisis. I don't want to diminish at all the experience of people who've been victimized by crime. I know how they feel. Half a block from my home, I was held up and emptied my wallet for a person who said he had a gun in his pocket. I didn't make him prove it. I didn't say, show me. I just gave him all my money. It was really scary. I took it out of my wallet and started to hand it to him and he jumped back and said, no, put it on the ground. He, he was so wired that I had no idea what he would do. Our mother, my mother lived in our house, in a separate little apartment in our house for the last years of her life. And one night she had a home invasion while she was there. That was totally scary. Our son, one of our sons was attacked with a baseball bat. Totally scary. I, I get that. Those are horrible experiences. And, and we ought to minimize for all of our citizens that experience, the possibility of that experience. But I do believe that a commitment of this magnitude, I, I'm completely sure that I would support some addition to the police force. But I think a commitment of this magnitude needs to be done more deliberately. And I think that, I'm absolutely certain, I'm convinced, that in the immediate future, more police means lower crime tomorrow, next year. But I think there are other things that we need to do for the long term. Aaron alluded to this in a previous conversation. And I think one of those things could be the establishment of a community resource center with, staffed by mental health professionals who could work with the police. So I'd like to see us take the time between now and the next time we do the budget with the idea that, yes, we will augment police, but we're going to augment them two ways, by adding police officers in ways that we can figure out how to pay for sustainably, but also get on track to augment them with a community resource center staffed by mental health professionals so that in the long run, the crimes that are committed by people who are suffering from untreated bipolar disease, untreated schizophrenia, which I think are the two big ones, but then there are others that, that mental health professionals can diagnose, that, that we can, over the long run, reduce that kind of tragedy, both for the, for the individuals and also for the people whom they, whom they impinge on when, when they go off the rails.
Charlie?
Yeah, I want to get back to some numbers. You know, the last time we, we added to the police department, we were in a much better financial position. And we, over two years, augmented the department with five police officers. We had a clear budget picture at that time. And then the recession hit. So, you know, we hired and then the recession hit and, but we were already committed. So I don't, you know, I, I'm not sure that the timing really matters. The issue is, is that we've had this need for a number of years to add to the police department and we haven't. We've tried to hold line on taxes and, you know, and we've managed to do that, but by cutting everything to the bone. And I think we do a disservice to our residents and we do a disservice to our staff because there's a, there's a key item here that, that I think is important to read. And it's, it's, you sort of have to read across page two to page five. And I'll just say that the last, the last sentence on page two is, "The, the mere fact that the Urbana Police have provided these services with limited resources, the on-call response and constant overtime is physically and emotionally exhausting." That's my biggest concern here. If we have stressed police officers, we are putting them at risk, we're putting our residents at risk. And so that's, that's a major concern. So let's, let's take, I said I was going to do some numbers here. In terms of our, our ratio here, we're really low compared to other cities with, with, In terms of our ratio here, we're really low compared to other cities with universities in their town. Our number right now is one-point-three or one-point-three-zero-four, but you look at Bloomington at one-point-six-four, Champaign at one-point-four-three, DeKalb at one-point-five, one-point-four-five, and Normal at one-point-four-seven. Those are all communities. Macomb is the only one that's lower than, is lower than them, but they're higher than us. So, here are university communities with police departments associated with universities there, I believe, and yet have higher ratios. And if we, just adding five gets us to one-point-four-three, we're still at the bottom, just barely at the bottom, of those comparable university communities. So, I think we have a problem and we probably should have dealt with it two budgets ago, if not the last budget. Regardless, I think for the staff that we have, for the residents that we have, we really need to do something now. So, I agree with the mayor that we need to get started. It may not be that we can, you know, I don't think we can get, you know, getting five hired is a pretty ambitious, I'd settle for just getting two or three out there as quickly as possible, you know, and, but with a goal of five.
Well, that was the original proposal, was to have three and then two. We have this spike in crime and if it keeps growing, we're not going to be able to deal with it. We can't deal with it right now. But anyway, that was the, that was the, one of the other possibilities that we could do. Aaron has been waiting patiently to talk. Aaron?
Yes, so thanks, Chief, for the memo information. So, there's a couple of things that stood out to me when I looked at the breakdown on page two about the number of detectives, just for a clear and concise answer on the number of actual detectives or investigators, detectives that we actually have. Is it eight or six? Or, I'm not sure what it is actually, that you actually have on staff right now detectives?
We have six.
Six, total. Okay. I am also concerned about a huge budget amendment that's going to be reoccurring in the middle of the year as a response to something that could have been, I mean, if we were going to bring in officers, one, two at a time or something like that over a period of time to address particular concerns, I think that is more of a reasonable approach to do something like that. Certainly, my constituents have said to me when I'm out door-to-door, they like to see the cruisers coming down the block on Fairview or something like that. I understand that it's a concern and people, it makes people feel safe. Honestly, whether or not that actually makes them any safer, I think that's debatable in some cases, but the reality is that the people feel safer. I do think from a ratio standpoint, it is important for us to, if we're going to talk, for instance, as Charlie was alluding to about one-point-three, one-point-this and that and the other, about comparable communities. If we take the seven-thousand students out of university housing, that moves our number up to one-point-five, something like that, right? So, I think if we're going to talk about ratios and talk about where we are on that spectrum of ratios, I think we see ourselves move up to basically almost average if we remove that population out of it. So, I do think that's something that we should, we should look at.
Well, we did consider that and one of the other things is we have eighty-three-thousand people in the city of Champaign that also enter our city and engage in criminal behavior. The seven-thousand students that may lay their head in the dormitories still eat in our community, drive in our community, are engaged in our community. So, we debated whether we broke some different metrics down to actually increase the population by, because Champaign, because it's such a transient community, but in the limited time we had, we just presented what was available based on numbers that we have.
Also, you'd have to subtract the students in the other communities. You wouldn't just subtract them here if you want to compare.
There's just several different things that I looked at. I'm trying to make sure I can get it all out here. Bill alluded to something else. Here's something directly for you. All right, so I can see the breakdown for, the actual salary is like sixty-five thousand dollars, sixty-four thousand dollars. The benefits was the twenty-five-seven and then the uniforms and training is three thousand dollars, right?
Right.
Squad cars, so we do not have to buy a squad car for each new person?
No, we do not.
And so, they just simply, they, these number of officers, let's just say we talk about five officers, they would be absorbed and the cars that are available, there's enough cars, there's enough vehicles right now for them to all have a vehicle when they, whenever shift they're going to be on. Is that correct?
Right. Or we would, on occasion, put two police officers in a car or because we would potentially support the Criminal Investigations Division with additional people, they wouldn't, they wouldn't need cars for those purposes. So, yes, we considered vehicles and, in fact, the mayor posed that question and I said, "We'll take the bodies." And I know the vehicle's an expensive venture and we would, we would accommodate with those numbers with the fleet that we currently have. So, we wouldn't be asking for more.
So, when we talk about uniforms and training and stuff like that, when you say uniforms, does that include the bulletproof vests and all that kind of different stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Weapons, ammunition, all those things are included in that?
Yes. Because we rotate those. When somebody retires or leaves, that weapon is recirculated so each person doesn't have, you know, bring it home when they retire.
So, the other thing that you mentioned were the twenty-two neighborhood watch organizations and stuff like that. So, I certainly support the police being in the community, talking to people and being accessible, right? So, what happens now if I'm at a Ucap meeting and whether it's Lieutenant Searls or, I keep forgetting all the titles, is it Lieutenant?
Sure.
Yeah. Or whoever it might be who's there, then it's usually not a uniformed officer there. So, who fills in the gap now for the, when those individuals are attending those meetings? What sort of void or vacuum is created if they are at a neighborhood watch meeting?
Well, Ucap is a little bit unique because Ucap has been in existence since the eighties and I attended that meeting literally for years, as did Chief Beely, as did Chief Adair. The problem is you can only spread yourself so thin and Lieutenant Searls, Lieutenant Seraphin, Lieutenant Sanders, Lieutenant Fitzgerald are literally spending sixty or more hours a week trying to accommodate the needs and I'm not minimizing Deputy Chief Morgan's role either because all of them contribute far more time than is available in any given week. They are trying to fill that void, but with neighborhood watch groups, we actually have the patrol division assigned officers to that area because those are the people that are most familiar with that neighborhood and with the people in that neighborhood, so they will be the ones that attend it. Now, we do have a new animal control officer who's going to manage the book portion of that to try to manage the scheduling and interface with the community if possible, but the police officers in those beats do those. As far as other community meetings, you see me at many of them and you see all the leadership team at many of them and they try to fill that void.
So, when those other officers, those patrol or beat officers, when they are attending those particular meetings, then you're saying that if it's an hour or two hours or whatever, they are actually on the clock being paid to attend those meetings?
They are. That's correct. They're, that's right. They're part of the personnel assigned to deal with the shift for that particular twelve-hour period.
One of the other things, I don't, I'd be curious to see, as we look at these other communities like Danville, for instance, I saw on the chart where it says Danville has, the ratio support for Danville is like one-point-nine, it's like one of the highest ones, right? They have less people and more officers than we have. But I just really want people to think that, you know, before we came here today, there was a report on the news of three shootings in Danville today. So, I do not think it's prudent for us to convey, I think, I certainly don't feel comfortable saying to the community that when we add more police officers, these shootings are going to stop or these issues that people are raising, whether it's on Vauder or on Fairview, the issues that are being raised do not necessarily get addressed by just hiring more police officers. I think investigating some of these particular crimes, especially violent crimes, right, could serve to remove certain people from the community if they are caught for doing a violent crime and maybe, I've always been supportive of focusing more of the time and energy on those more, you know, rape, robbery, murders and things like that. So, I would continue to support something like that. But I just don't think that all of a sudden, just because we've got five more beat officers, I think it's, I think it's misleading to tell the public, and I'm not just speaking to you directly.
No, no, I understand.
That all of a sudden, these things are going to change.
As I tried to articulate in the report, it's not going to be five beat officers. It's going to be spread throughout the police department. The detective division is literally saturated with overtime. I mean, they can't, they can't provide services any longer. So, we're going, as I said, we have an organizational chart, but we're going to move it around a great deal to accommodate the needs that deal with crime scene processing, investigating, death investigation, sexual assault. So, it's not going to be five police officers put in the uniformed division.
So, I'm almost done. I do not, so as I try to advocate for the underlying issues, I would much rather, well, I would certainly see myself, Charlie, supporting a move or taking them to move some funding from social service to pay for summer jobs, right? So, but I'm not supportive of taking social service funding to create another space for another police officer. And I do agree, going back to Diane's point, that if we're going to budget something like this, I do think it should be done in a particular process and in a way because to Dennis's point and you've said as well, even if we hired them today, December third, twenty sixteen, they would, they could likely not be on the street until December third of twenty eighteen, of twenty seventeen, right?
Which is the reason why I wouldn't like, not like to wait.
I understand. And, you know, to your point, you were in a meeting, you and I were in a meeting years ago when the interrupters were brought to this town to come in and do interruptions before our city started to look like this. And we did not get a very warm reception from the, those who were in charge at that time. What you guys didn't think when we tried to say, "Look, this stuff was coming," many of the people in the positions, yourself and Chief Cobb at the time, said, "Hey, we're not Chicago. We don't need that type of stuff here. Where's the funding?" So, now this would be a great time for us to, well, three or four years ago would have been a great time when they were brought here to actually pay people to go and do some interruption stuff to stop things from getting to this particular point. So, I agree with you. I'm on the same page with you.
I think to the community coalition, they are actually engaging in interrupters as we speak.
Now, they are. Now, they are. But what I'm raising is that this was something that was brought to the police department and to the community three, four years ago, before we got to this particular space that we're at now, and we didn't get that type of support and that type of mandate to spend a hundred thousand dollars or whatever. The question was, where's the money going to come from? So, now I'm saying that there is an opportunity for us to do that, to get people into those spaces, to interrupt some of these, these groups and this violence that's taking place in these two hotspot areas and stuff like that. But to wrap up in summation, I'm not opposed to having, I don't, I certainly couldn't support five. I think the number is just way too high to support something like that, but I'm open to continue to have a conversation about what that could look like moving forward. But I certainly would like to see this type of money that's being saved. Also, look at some of the root causes that contribute to that and I think we can address that with summer youth programs. I think we could address that with supporting the interrupters program. There's a couple of things that we could do to actually address that.
And again, just for the record, the community coalition is actively engaged in a summer youth employment program, both in Champaign and Urbana got on board. In fact, Diane spearheaded a great deal of moving in that direction and I think it's an incredible program. The community coalition is our investment in the future, no ifs, ands, or buts.
Charlie?
I'd like to, in the interest of time, we have only twenty minutes left, move this to next week's committee meeting for continued discussion.
We can do that. I have two people that want to say something. Marva Wright, are you still here? She was opposed to adding police. And then, I can't quite hear you.
Sorry about that.
First of all, I said Marva Wright was opposed to adding more police. I don't know if she's still here. Are you? Okay, come on up. You don't want to talk? Okay, Jake Sabry?
Jane.
Jane, I'm sorry, I couldn't read your writing.
Don't get old, your hands get shaky.
Okay, so you have questions?
I have. I do have a few questions and a couple of comments. I am a regular tender of community coalitions, so I am definitely aware of some of the crime statistics that are shared monthly. I am gathering information these days to try to understand the, what I want to support regarding additional policing tonight has bent me or leaned me in a different direction than I was originally sitting in. I do want to say, I think using community volunteers, not to be police people, but to be, support people and to kind of have a take-back-the-neighborhood attitude. Neighborhood watches seem a little bit surveilling to me, but I understand the principle behind them, but neighborhood associations and neighbor, block parties and, or block groups and stuff like that, I think would be one way to engage the community and most of all, to have some core people to train. Recently, I'm involved with CU at Home and one of their volunteer programs and recently we've had two trainings by Pete, the Police Training Institute people regarding addressing volatile situations and de-escalating situations. I found them immensely helpful and it has occurred to me that this would be a wonderful thing to spread broadly. The coalition has neighborhood champions and work with them by, to get as many neighborhood groups involved in becoming trained because a lot, a lot of the mental health issues are not criminal. And if people know their neighbors and you know Joe down the block has episodes of volatility and you know how to talk him down, you don't always have to call the police because he's agitated and walking down the middle of the street and yelling. If you know how to talk to him and he knows you, you can go talk to him and maybe get him home and quietly settle down. I'm not saying we should try to replace the mental health people or the police, but it just seems like this is a way for the community to come together and neighborhood associations and the training that the police already have made available to groups might be a way to go. I really have a sad feeling about having the police be seen as deterrents only. Previous speaker said something about that. The previous speaker said something about that. I don't want to look at every police car and freeze up and slow down. I want to figure that police car is doing his job. And if I'm doing my job and driving well, then we'll get about our business and I don't have to be afraid. And so having a more personal presence in the neighborhoods is vitally important. And I commend officers and those who go to community groups and association meetings. So I guess I didn't ask my questions. My big question is, and I guess it's been addressed by Mr. Ammons. There's not really any, is there any real proof that more police officers really means less crime? Chicago has thousands, they have officers, they have lots of crime. I'm not sure if it's just bodies in uniform that's the answer. It's people who have relationships in the community with the community people. And I've been learning this through the Coalition. So, I'm sorry, it didn't turn out to be questions after all.
That's okay. We want to hear what you have to say. I think there is a question for you from Eric Jacobson.
Well, actually, since you posed a question, I think I, at least I've read the primary sociological literature with respect to one question. It's slightly indirect, but there are, there have been policing experiments in which testing the efficacy of hotspot policing, where you actually load high-crime areas with a lot of police presence. And they did that experiment that I think would be almost unimaginable, but they also did in parallel to that, just sort of another area of the city where they just, you know, did equal policing and didn't pay attention. And the hotspot policing really did work. It really does reduce crime in that area. So I think that, I think based on my reading, this was part of the research that I did when I was on the traffic stop study task force. And I think that, I think it's really well-established with good data that intense policing, intense police presence in high-crime areas does reduce the crime level there.
Thank you for that. And to be honest, I am quite concerned about the Vaught and Laramie area. I live near the Laramie, I live near Washington and Philo. And a family that I'm, refugee family that I'm watching out for lives near Vaught. And so I become very, very aware of that area. And I personally am not afraid, but it's a concern of mine particularly for this new family in town because they don't understand.
Thank you very much for coming. Okay, so Charlie, you say there's, we're going to have to... Okay, so we have one other topic, sanctuary cities. And there are two people that want to talk at the time.
So they should talk right now.
So Priscilla Dorsett, are you still here?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate being here tonight. A lot of people told me, why you come? Because it's already a done deal or whatever they decide is going to happen. And it has before, but let's hope not. I thoroughly hope you all think about it very carefully tonight, what we've talked about, whether it's the police or the, all the thousands of people that could come into our community. I believe in humanity. I've lived here all my life, from kindergarten, from St. Mary's, Urbana Junior High, Urbana High School. That's me. So I am your citizen. And I just want to let you know that I always have believed in police being around, at least being seen. The children look forward to that, they learn from it. Whether those police can't be everywhere, I live out somewhat in the country. Of course they can't be there. I have dogs, I have a husband, and I hope in the heck I can be safe. And I feel safe. But I do feel safe knowing that we do have a good police. I have family, 32 of us in our family, so we're spread out. Some are correctional officers and some are just average kids, my kids. I have 10 great-grandkids, so I'm a mother, wife, grandmother, great-grandma. But I am your Urbana community person. I noticed how the news is gone, so nobody will know what was said. But I hope that at least tonight you will listen to everything carefully.
You're on TV.
They're here?
You're on TV. We are on broadcasting.
I'm also losing my hearing, I'm sorry. But that comes with age. I'm 70 years old and that's a young 70 to me. I keep active, I work with the Ambucks children, I work, I used to be a mentor, I did a little everything. I worked at the UBI for 40 years. I worked with the Chancellor's office, I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of talking tonight. I remember a lot of that stuff, I do. And we were there to help and we helped a lot of people. And I'm always willing to help people and our family is too. That's what we're here for, as far as bringing thousands and thousands and thousands of people. And you can't help everybody, but you try real hard. But I just hope, deep down in your heart, what was discussed tonight will stay in your heart and really think about it. Don't jump into something that you think, oh, we must do it or we should do it. I'm not saying, I don't know who's Republican, Democratic, whatever. I voted and I'm happy I voted, but, you know, every time we vote, at least we feel that we've accomplished something. And I hope we've accomplished something and we're all in God's hands. But we do need to think very seriously. And like I said, I'm not scared to have a police. I've been stopped by police because I got admitted many years ago when I was younger. Yeah, I got stopped, I got a ticket and I was scared to death, take it to my dad. But I learned the hard way. At least he was there to say, hey, let's not do it again, you know? I did get a ticket and I worked it off. I worked at the old, on Philo Road, the old Red Bear Stand with, of course I... I mean, I've worked a lot of positions, I've worked at Macy's, I've done a lot of things. I've seen a lot of things as my family, so spread out in different things. Some are posters, we own Beck's Country Shop partially for a little bit. We all, my husband and I both retired, but we are always willing to work. And I think if you really talk to the people here in Urbana, and I don't mean the students and people from Chicago, I don't know who was here tonight. I didn't see anybody I knew from Urbana, a couple of people maybe. Were they from Chicago? Were they from Champaign? Were they from where? But I'm here from Urbana. And all I want to say is I support whatever I can support. We don't have that much money, but my husband just had a heart attack and he just had an operation. And I saw the bill and I thought I was going to drop dead, but thank goodness we paid for insurance. But we'll make it, we have a big family, we work together. We don't have a neighborhood watch, but we have a neighborhood of friends and we keep an eye on each other. I tell somebody new comes in, we make sure to go down and talk with them. The police can't be there and say, hey, we've had students on a roof growing marijuana on this roof, four houses down from us. Let me tell you, we went to find out what's going on and we got that lady who owned that house to get those guys out of there. We all had children around at the time and it was scary. I can remember playing out in the yard with our trucks and our kids who used to roller skate out in the yard. Not anymore, it's right there where Soccer Planet is. And let me tell you, there's a lot of traffic coming in and it's growing. And our community is growing, but it's growing good. But we need everybody's support. And I'm just here to tell you that I appreciate what you do and I just want you to stop and think to really, really study it. Don't jump into anything, okay? That's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening to me. I was the third one here tonight, by the way, but my paper was the last one.
You are. You're not the last one.
Not the last one?
You're the next to the last one, but thank you for your patience. Ricardo Diaz.
I'm Ricardo Diaz, I live at 1002 East Main, Urbana. First, I want to commend you for staying so late. Your patience and your civility. But I want to thank your families because every minute you're here, you're not with them. And it shows dedication and we had a lot of immigrants today and also last week, 280-plus people at the Champaign Library. A lot of people that are new to the system, new to understanding why we would sit here and go back and forth civilly. So I thank you for it. I do want to add a few comments as to the consideration for the ordinance. I know it's not before you yet on Sanctuary and I'm also aware that it involves many moving pieces. But just to continue on what the chief said, one thing you don't want to do is to have the local police in charge of federal laws that are, as somebody said, really civil laws. Our police, our city is doing a great job in being immigrant-friendly in this consideration. I would dare say that I've seen most of you and most of you have considered the issue enough to know that immigrants are contributors to our community. But I'd like to change it a little bit for you as you brought the issue forward. Sanctuary City designation is fuzzy at best. And calling ourselves is a badge of honor, I understand it, I would feel it. The 280 people last Wednesday were the choir, it's a very large choir, and we would be proud. But I think the feeling that we got that night and tonight, as many people came also for the first time, shows that we, all of us care enough to do. But I'd like for you to consider that a designation is but that unless it comes with a lot more action. We're copying essentially the Chicago ordinance. It's nice, but we have a de facto friendly town already. We talk to the police chief, we talk to Chief Cobb, we talk to the sheriff. We work it out when it comes to immigrants. We have many reasons to designate ourselves something. But I'd like to propose that instead of being on the defensive on national policy, we take it a step further. Take it a step further when it comes to the steps that we can do to be truly immigrant-friendly. That is, you and I know that the integration of immigrants takes patience. It takes ladies' families, like to take a refugee family. But it also takes some proactive analysis of what our city services are doing for immigrants. I think Libby, she's had to go home, but she, last year she saw that in the study of immigrant businesses in Urbana, we expected 10, 15, we had to stop at 40 as we started interviewing in Urbana. We have a lot of immigrant families trying to go beyond their meager salaries. Immigrants usually go. But we also have a large section of the immigrants coming into our community that are well-educated and well-earning. All you have to do is go to Carl or any of the hospitals to know that many of the foreign-born are servicing us. So I ask you to think beyond then the defense of any national policy with an ordinance that would put us under a target. There are many things we can do. And let me put at the extreme, why not all Urbana residents to vote for Urbana-related issues? 100 years ago, it was common practice for anyone who lived in a community to vote. Why not? Because we've fallen into the tendency of not doing and not letting them, they're not us. Well, when a vote is valid is when somebody lives and is concerned. That's at the extreme end. But that's the kind of issue we need to be considering when it comes to, what are the principles that we want to govern ourselves and with each other? In the middle are designating somebody within the city who takes care of immigrant matters. And it may be Alex when it comes to all those violations. And I was at the LEO's PTA meeting two Mondays ago. The stories of people already being accosted because they look different, because they look dark. People being cut off, people being yelled at. It was a tearful meeting to listen to some of our parents already telling of things that are happening ever since the election. It's like the towel got taken off and people are expressing, not expressing, just being mean already to anyone who looks foreign. So those things are happening, but they're very hard to document. Our present procedures to declare that I've been targeted are way beyond any immigrant, especially the language side, but also the comfort. And who do I go to? So there's some intermediate steps, but let me speak now for Immigration Forum, something we've been working for and we want to thank you for. We started working on the welcoming awards three years ago as an opportunity to build up what we considered was needed in the area, to compete with Indianapolis, Chicago, St. Louis, that we're becoming more immigrant-friendly. And that is that we establish a group, an intercity group, an advisory group on immigration to do the analysis, the benefits, the cost benefits and all that, to be able to come to all three governments, four governments with the city. Rantool is included in, at least in the Immigration Forum's area. To say, so what can we do? How do we make it better? How do we keep the graduates of the U of I that we've graduated and cultivated? So the Inter-City Immigrant Advisory Board is something that we'd like to put before you as a proactive action. Designate somebody as we come and convene in January. Convene somebody that you can send to inform us of what Urbana is doing, what we can do better, and then to correlate. We're headed into a very ugly year. And to finish off, it is when we get the feeling of when, as I started seeing people that have barely begun to say, I want to do something for immigrants. I've seen a ton of them in the last two weeks. It surprises me, it humbles me, but it also warms me. That's the kind of community that we are. And I thank you for being with us on Wednesday, as many of you as you came. But there are many more opportunities and darn it, whatever comes down the pipeline, we can withstand by being more than reactive to whatever they're doing. We can just certify that we can do those actions and it's in coordination through us. So the Immigration Forum provides and wants to very much, not only advocate, but provide the work groups to do this and channels to collaborate with you. Indianapolis has a model in which the city spawned a not-for-profit to do this work with the city. There are ways to do it, but we need to do it and consider it more than with an ordinance, a resolution. That's just the beginning of stating something, but we need to do better. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're a little bit past our time, right? So we only have one item. Well, we need to, we need to put this to the committee of the whole. I think we're not going to be able to talk more on. So is there a motion to do that?
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we have one item left. An appointment to the Community Development Commission, Michael Braun, I would recommend.
A second.
Okay, a motion by Smythe, second by Roberts, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. So thank you all. This meeting is adjourned, but we will keep talking about this.
So I just want to make sure, I'm clear that this is going to be on the agenda for the next committee of the whole?
Right, right. The two topics, the police. We just had discussion tonight and we'll bring you some more specifics.
Okay.